How are you?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Newtown Council Hybrid Budget Meeting, the beginning. Today is February tenth, two thousand and twenty five. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under our command. In the midst of all uncertainty and justice.
We please have a roll call. Mr. Coos.
Here.
Mr. Dixon. Mrs. Diglio.
Yeah.
Mrs. Teetz and Mayor. Here and Mr. Dixon should be joining us at about six P M. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this special meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. All right, we're going to turn this over to Mr. Russo to kick us off.
Sure. Thanks, Matt. So you have before you the agenda for tonight. We'll have manager C M F O review. Times are estimated. Then we'll have P D and recreation. We'll have the regular council meeting at seven and then we'll conveniently go to public works, water sewer, fire department, and then open to the public at the end of the meeting, three minutes each. So for tonight's dog and pony, I'll be the dog. Tom will be the pony. Mr. Ferry will start us off with the auditor slash C M F O thirty thousand foot view of what life looks like in the financial world for the town of Newtown and I'll go into my review.
Thank you, Tom. So every year I used to start off on saying what would I've seen in the state. It's been pretty quiet. No new local finance board notices that affect us dramatically. But one thing I got to tell you is that I've been here roughly about six or seven months and and to work with the employees, the manager, everybody. It's such a great, really great professional team. I'm happy to be where I landed. So with that. Um, so what I normally do is go over the fund balances for the current fund for the water and sewer. Um, I go over some of the tax collection rates. So for the current fund, uh, for the year ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four, we had a slight decrease of two hundred and five thousand dollars. Reason being that the results of operations, which is basically your revenues over expenditures, came in at two million eighty five thousand. We used or the town used, uh, two million two ninety one. So that was the reason why. So as I like to say every year, we put we took out more cookies than we put into the cookie jar. Um, this year, between me and Tom, we tried to use a little less fund balance, assuming that um, the results of operations would stay the same. Um, the fund balances, um, so as I mentioned, for two thousand and twenty four went down two hundred and five. So we're at four million, two hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. Um, if you take and you look at two thousand and thirteen.
One minute, Mr. Page twelve. Or the, uh, if you were looking for a reference. Sorry, go ahead.
I've, yeah, I'm just doing this not even.
That's right.
Booklet. Because I don't want to steal this Tom's thunder. So if you look at the year two thousand and thirteen, we were at one point five million dollars. So you can see that the fund balance has increased, um, you know, substantially over the years. The tax collection rate this, uh, for two thousand and twenty four was at ninety eight point four six. The previous year was ninety eight, seven, four. Now that number is in the year before that was ninety eight, six, nine. So as I always mention every year, that's a very important number because that's what our reserve for uncollected taxes is based on, which is a statutorily required appropriation. Um, so when our tax collection rate is lower, the reserve for uncollected taxes has to go higher and is statutorily required. Why I'm like, I'm sorry. My phone was talking to my wristwatch. Um, so our, our net value taxable um, this year increased sixty seven million, two hundred and eighty three thousand, four hundred and ten over last year. And if you look at, uh, two thousand and twenty four was our reval year. Um, so two thousand and twenty three, we're at six hundred and ten million. And two thousand and fourteen, we went to one billion forty one thousand. This year for two thousand, two thousand and twenty five, we're at one million oh, uh, one hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and nine million dollars. So using those numbers, um, what I like to do is always talk about what one tax point equates to because that's always, um, an important number. Especially when you're doing the budget. When you're doing the budget, one tax point, uh, for a hundred thousand dollar house is ten dollars per year. Two hundred thousand dollars house is twenty dollars per year. Thirty thousand dollar house is thirty thousand. You kind of get the idea. So every time you change the amount, we go out to the taxpayers for by one tax point. That's the ten dollars, twenty dollars, thirty dollars. Uh, that number this year is one hundred and ten thousand dollars. So if you don't do anything with the revenues and you increase the budget by a hundred and ten thousand, the amount to go out to taxpayers for increases, uh, by one tax point. Or if you decrease the budget and you don't do anything with the revenues, it goes down by that. So a hundred and ten thousand is the magic bullet number. The average house this year was, um, three hundred and thirty eight thousand, one twenty seven. And the way to, uh, the way I get that is I take the, there's a residential number for total and the number of residential properties, just to do a division and you get that number. Um, two thousand and twenty four was three hundred and eighteen. So this year went from three thirty eight to three eighteen. Um, twenty thousand dollar increase. That just doesn't look right. So I asked the assessor and it was kind of like a ripple effect um, from the revaluation from the previous year, there's still kind of adjustments being made because of the revale. So when I did the recap, when I did the calculation or when me and Tom came up with the calculation um, for the tax increase, we use this year's average house. Because comparing last year's to this year is like comparing apples and oranges. You just, it just didn't work right. It's like, especially the reval year. It did the average house almost tripled, doubled, depends on your house. The rule of thumb is one third go up, one third go down, one third stay in the middle. The, um, that's all I have for the current fund. Tom will talk about the, you know, the increase in the taxes and the, uh, the budget itself. Uh, the water and sewer budget decreased by a hundred and forty two thousand dollars. Uh, results, so the, the results of operations were one, which is the revenues, well, in this case, expenditures over, uh, the revenues over expenditures came down at one million, one hundred and twenty two thousand. Uh, they balanced the budget with one million, two sixty five. So again, we put more cook, we took more cookies out of the cookie jar than we put in by a hundred and forty two thousand dollars. That's not too bad. The fund balance, um, at the end of the year for water and sewer was three million, four seventy seven. The previous year was three million, uh, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, those are good numbers. The, um, two thousand and twenty four levy increased by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, the previous year, actually, the levy was up two hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars. Um, so modern store is pretty easy to do. Um, so for net debt. So since the year of, um, two thousand and fourteen, uh, the debt's been decreasing. So from two thousand and twenty, two thousand and fourteen to the year two thousand and twenty four, we've had a three million, five hundred and twenty one thousand dollar decrease in the amount of debt. We're paying off more than we're utilizing. Um, so this year our net debt was thirteen million, five hundred and forty four thousand dollars. Um, same thing with the percentage of, um, net debt. We were at, uh, two thousand and fourteen, we were at two point six five percent. Using the average equalize at valuation, this year we were at one, one point five one percent. Substantial decrease. Also, the reason why is we're getting a lot of grant money. In two cases, we've had, um, the I bank. So we've had, uh, two projects. We had an equipment purchase, um, which were, um, street sweep, street, street sweeper, dump trucks, um, a sewer truck. Um, that was one point five million dollars. Um, we also did the memory park drainage project. That was nine hundred and eighty three thousand. So in total, that was two point, almost two point six million dollars. Um, a couple, a couple of weeks ago, I got noticed, uh, from, um, our bond council that that was total grant forgiveness. The two point five million is going to be totally eaten up by the state of New Jersey for all that, all that grant stuff. So that's nothing that adds to our debt. We also had the nine one one, uh, project um, for communications. That was a federal grant, which was one million, three hundred and thirty three thousand. I put in the last reimbursement, uh, last week for thirty two thousand dollars. That was again, totally paid for by the state and, uh, by the federal government, another one point three three. Um, we have some projects, um, right now that we're doing for the water and sewer treatment plant. Um, for the chemical room upgrades, pumps, um, and SCADA are, um, the control box, basically the brains of the water and short, water and sewer treatment plant. That's another two point one million dollars. Um, that's going to be principal forgive also. Um, there's only a hundred and fifty five thousand that we might have to take out a loan. Um, but again, I bank takes, picks that up and, um, gives us pretty low interest rate. So that's the state of the state. That's my little part. Tom's looking at me like.
And Tom, we've also had the ability to refinance, uh, some of the debt in recent.
I think we, you, you guys refinanced in two thousand and twenty three. Um, and prior to that was when I was um, the auditor, we refinanced a lot of the water and sewer. Um, and then that subsequently got re, um, resigned too. So I think we're pretty, we're pretty set with the interest rates. Um, I might be issuing some fine anticipation notes moving forward for some of the non I bank uh, projects, um, only because we're running, we're starting to run a little, uh, low on, um, on our cash for general capital and, um, it's more the general capital more than the water store.
Any questions for Tom right now? Tom Ferry, that is. Okay, uh, before, Ms. Russo, you started, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank, um, members of the public that are here. Um, we've tripled our numbers. Two new additions this year. It's significant. All right, Esther, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start on page one and thank you, Tom Ferry. We feel the same way about having you here. So thanks for the kind words.
Absolutely.
So page one is, uh, start my budget message. Obviously, we're, we're always focusing on cost effectiveness through productivity, staff, volunteers, technology, protecting core services and revenue enhancement, especially with shared services strategies. Page two shows the overall current fund budget, sixteen million, eighty seven thousand, five seventy seven. Sixty five percent fund salaries and benefits, sixty six full time, ninety two part time employees. You see the breakdown on page two. On pages three, four, and five, those come from Scott. He talks about the R U D, he talks about tax appeals and reassessment. Obviously, if there's any questions, I can always get your answers offline, but it just gives you a general overview of the appeals and where the N V T is, as Tom said, N V T went from one billion to one point one billion. So that was an increase of sixty seven million.
Wait, Tom, can you just go back to page two for a second? So overall, um, salaries are down slightly and that's because of the uh, retirees and.
Yep.
Most of, okay, thank you.
Page six, we talk about healthcare. We were, we had a very big increase this year, but it was actually less than the state health benefits fund. So we'll try to mitigate that. I, I was selected to be chairman of the fund for two years. So let's see if I can tighten things up this year and next year, but the health, health insurance was a big increase for all the funds across the state. Page seven just gives you a different visual on the revenues in support of the budget and how that played out. The favorite page, uh, page seven. We have the N V T going from one billion to one point one. Average house went from three eighteen, nine seventy six to three thirty eight, one twenty seven. So based on this budget as presented, the average increase is three dollars a month on the house. That would be the average residential property. Water and sewer comes in at six point one million. As Tom mentioned, we have two thousand, seven hundred and seventy five accounts. We'll do water sewer at eight P M later tonight and obviously thank the council for allowing me to serve my seventeenth year here on page eight. Pages nine and ten.
Nice stamp, Tom.
Well, I was waiting to see who would find the stamps. So, so, uh, pages eight and nine have the officials, ten org chart. Tom, I don't know, maybe you could do a little bit of cap calc. It's always interesting. Page eleven, just the, the two.
You got stamp, by the way.
Good. So, yeah.
And then, actually, do we, just one second. Do we have, um, extra copies, Kat, of the budget by any chance over there? Do we have an extra copy? Just?
I have it right here.
Just so our guests in the front could follow along.
Yeah, thank you.
So as you know, there's two caps that we have to deal with. One's the Chris Christie version, one's the.
We're on page eleven.
John Paul was born version. So we have the two caps that we have to deal with. So Tom will walk us through each of them and how they were impacted in terms of the budget.
Yeah, the nineteen seventy seven cap. The year I graduated high school, uh, was was the cap on the appropriations. Okay, um, that tried to slow, um, govern expenditures. So, um, the budget's broken up basically between the revenues and you have inside the cap, outside the cap, debt service capital. Most of all, the expenditures are inside the cap and the state says certain things could be outside the cap when things go up um, over and above what they allow, um, such as insurances. If insurance goes up eighteen percent, well, some, they allow group insurance to go outside the cap, but they tell us year after year what we can put out there, what we can't. This year, based upon the, um, what they use, um, the index for the index rate, some kind of index rate. Um, the state allowed everybody to go up two and a half percent for inside the cap. They allow you to go up to three and a half with an ordinance, which I think is on for tonight.
Yes.
Um, in the regular meeting. So we go to three and a half percent. That allows you to go to three and a half percent and it also allows you to take whatever you had from the previous years that you didn't use, which we call a bank. So it allows you, if you have an extraordinary year, um, allows you to take what you didn't use in the previous years and utilize that. Now, in no way, shape, or form does this two and a half or three and a half percent change the budget that we presented in any way. It just gives us the number we have to get to or the number we're allowed to go to. Um, if you look all the way on the bottom of page eleven, you can see that we were almost, um, three hundred thousand under what the state allowed us to go to. Um, do we, you want me to talk about the levy cap or no? Hold off.
Yeah, we'll hold off on that one. Right. Just to give you an idea of the calculations that Tom has to put into this or the ordinance that we do every year is on for introduction tonight. Page twelve just gives you a overview of the current fund revenue comparison. You'll see the total in twenty five, sixteen million, eighty seven, five seventy seven, six point four percent estate aid, which is slightly less about a point less than last year. And then we're using less fund balance towards the total budget thirteen point thirty one. So this gives you a nice history of, you know, where things are at similarly. Page thirteen, you see something similar for water sewer. It just gives you gives you a good historical data on where the budgets have been and fund balance, et cetera. Page fourteen is my dollars from Randolph that I stole seventeen years ago. So it just gives you fiscal facts. Half of your tax dollar goes to the Board of Ed. One third comes to the town and the rest goes to the county for the county library and open space. So I can get an overview of that. Tom mentioned fund balance. You can see the visual starting from nineteen eighty three to the present on page fifteen, four point two available, use two point one, balance two point one. So strong, strong numbers in spite of the slight decrease that we expect. On page sixteen, we start with revenues for the current. You see, uh, amount to be raised by taxation, the surplus. We see local revenues, different fees and permits and such. U C C and then continue on seventeen, you see other revenues. So we'll do two pages, add a clip here for time's sake. If there's any questions, let me know. But otherwise, I think Tom did a nice job putting, putting these together.
Questions from the council on, on pages sixteen or seventeen? I mean, the only thing that I, I want to note, because Tom did make a mention in his comments about, uh, more grant money coming in and more shared services are the, um, continued, or I would should say the trajectory of, um, shared service agreements.
Yeah, we have that on eighteen and nineteen, Mayor, if you'll.
Also.
Hold off on that until we get to those.
So, yeah, okay.
I think the big thing with the revenues, though, is the state, we used, we were getting municipal relief aid and it was taken away throughout the whole state. So that was a hundred and six thousand dollars. So right from the get go, we were almost one tax point down in, in revenues because the state, uh, didn't give us our municipal relief aid.
What was the reason for that?
I don't, I don't, I think that was kind of COVID related municipal relief aid.
Eighteen and nineteen. Gives you a snapshot on grants, obviously, as brands come in, we chapter one fifty nine them, but just give you a snapshot. Then you see the various inter locals that the mayor referred to.
So the inter locals have seen a hundred and ninety eight percent increase since twenty twenty three on the revenue side. I mean, that's significant. I mean, I know we're doing more work for that as well. Um, and throughout the year, assess those service levels.
Yep.
Um, at some point, you know, we have to make sure we have staff and coverage for those. But I mean, that's significant. To Tom's point, we lose revenue from the state, we have less collected taxes, et cetera, et cetera. And then, you know, to have the other, there's only two sides of the balance sheet, right? The revenues and the expenses. So to have more revenues coming in um, is significant. I just wanted to make mention of that.
So this is high level. Page twenty, if there's enough questions.
Are we expecting, um, a large delinquency to be paid off this year? Seems like a fair jump.
See the delinquent taxes?
Went up.
Page nineteen, yeah. Well, last year it was one eighty five. We collected three.
Because, because our collection rate was less, we're allowed to use more. And the offset is the reserve for uncollected taxes. So it's kind of sometimes balances. It's a safe formula, by the way, too.
All right, twenty, now we're into expenditure detail, twenty and twenty one.
So maybe you have some thoughts on any questions?
Oh, I'm trying to work on this thing because it was going nuts. Um, as far as on twenty twenty one, no, I just circle things that I noticed differences in.
We moved the redevelopment out of C I F, if you see that.
Excuse me. On the internships.
Yeah.
Um, we're putting in thirteen thousand for internships versus what we actually did last year, which is a little over six thousand. Are we going to hire, hire more interns?
That would be the goal.
Okay. Just wondering why the extra money, do.
So I was just saying that redevelopment, we moved to Tom, who's C I F, he's not a C I F fan. So he moved it off of my C I F page in the back and he put it under town manager. So that's the money that we usually put aside for any redevelopment that's not escrowable. So that's why you see that new line item. That's his fault.
Tom, any particular reason why you're not a, go ahead? Any particular reason why?
I think it's just the visual and he, he wants it kind of in the operating budget, right? And it carved out, yeah. Of course, he never said that in thirty years, being the auditor. Twenty two and twenty three, any questions?
Are we planning on purchasing something in the finance administration department? Or is there an equipment maintenance? Because I see there's a, most of three thousand increase there. Is something coming down?
I think we added, um, you're going to remember now, because this was a while ago. I think I moved an expenditure or equipment out of something I thought belonged really in equipment and maintenance. It might have been the, uh, copiers I moved more into ours. What was it?
And that's not, you're picking it up again and put it in ours.
That's what it was.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't think it belonged, M S I.
Oh, for the finance.
Belonged in his budget. I think it belonged more in finance.
That's the software.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
One more question.
Thank you, Jenny.
Administration fees.
Um, one thirty dash two two three, the bonding admin fees, Tom.
I'm sorry.
Sandy has a question about the bonding admin fees. When would we pay that?
Page twenty three.
On page twenty three, there's almost a three thousand dollar increase. I know we budgeted in the past five thousand, five thousand, but we've only basically spent like nineteen hundred or two thousand, but we still keep budgeting the five.
So, yeah, um, I figured if we're going to start doing some bond anticipation notes or, um, using the I bank kind of things, I kind of put that in there in case we didn't have anything in the capital to charge you up bonding to. So I, I kind of put it there because I know it's too, the whole year of twenty four, we didn't do any bond anticipation notes or anything. So we're going to be moving it. We're going to be moving this year with issuing, you know, bond anticipation notes because we do have some debt authorized that we never issued bonds for.
There's twenty four, twenty five.
Okay, now, another question. Under the tax assessment, under commercial assessments, we were charged last year eleven thousand, four hundred, but we didn't put anything in for this year. Are we not anticipating any commercial assessments?
I think that was the, what came out of that line item is that, um,
Five up from the bottom to me.
One fifty, two seventeen. Is that additional money we spend in regards to reassessment? I've got to see who the vendor. The Hollister?
No, that was, um, wait, maybe a break. It had been them. Oh, no.
Yes, I'll see. I think that was additional work related to the commercials. We don't anticipate having that this year.
Okay. I just want to make sure. I appreciate the decreases, but I also want to make sure we're not decreasing and then going to get hit. Wanna make sure we're not decreasing and then gonna get hit. So. And I see a, rather a large increase in legal fees, so we, what are we anticipating on the legal fees?
Tax appeal, like you're talking about under.
No, just covering what we anticipate to be expenses, different ordinances and things that we're working on. Landlord related issues and other things that are set as goals for me for this year.
Okay, labor relations, are we going to be doing any contracts?
Uh, I don't anticipate contracts this year, but as we all know, there are. Things that pop up during the course of the year that we need guidance from Jim on.
Okay.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven. I'll read you a little snippet on one eighty-two nineteen. Uh, March twentieth, twenty twenty-four, Governor Murphy signed Bill eight four S fifty, which set forth guidelines for affordable housing obligations for the fourth round. Goes from July twenty twenty-five through July twenty thirty-five. In October, D C A published local regional obligations. Our obligations were forty-five units and perspective seventy-two. We accepted these obligations and submitted the resolution and declaratory judgment in support of the fourth round prior to the deadline. Town was now prepare and adopt a housing element and fair share plan to address the affordable housing obligations prior to June thirtieth. So if there's any questions, that's the twenty-five.
That's the, yeah, on one eighty dash two nineteen.
Yeah, that's the, the twenty-five.
Yes. On the record. Nothing else. We will stop on twenty-eight fire two P D, so you have health insurance when you put in statute. I will wait for the chief before we get into that. Page. If you don't mind, if we could go to thirty-seven. Tax appeals miscellaneous utilities. On thirty-seven.
The tax appeal numbers, cause we have some carryover.
Uh, yeah, that's, well, that's the reserve.
Yeah.
Try to put every year and increase it because it's a slight increase on the appeals, but. As we all know, utility costs.
Yeah.
Um.
Yep.
Unfortunately, maybe over time those will come down. Depending on policies. So.
There, uh, I know. Seems like not that long ago, we did some. Energy and lighting audits and things like that, there's nothing.
We'll consider it down the line, but we've. We've switched over what we can, we just. You know. Good vendors for internet and cell phone, I mean, you know, we've done all the. Low hanging, high hanging and mid fruit, so. But it's really driven by electricity. And gas, you know.
And they did have quite an increase this year.
Those are the two big drivers. If, if those change, it affects everything else. And then thirty-eight, thirty-nine. A lot of this you saw in. Earlier pages, just gives you, you know, different visual on grants and the interlocal endless tax collection and court. S R O animal control. So it's thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
If we've been paying um the statewide risk control. Um, anywhere from five thousand, five hundred to five, almost six thousand, why don't we have any money in there?
Jane, what came out of five oh two zero zero zero, it's top of thirty-eight. That was, I think that was. Trying to remember that.
It's not jumping out.
No.
That's a grant, so. It's a grant, so they're gonna offset.
Yeah, that's the offset, we didn't get to twenty twenty-five.
So, yeah, if we get to twenty-five, I'll do a chapter one fifty-nine, we're going to revenues and it'll go here.
Okay.
This may be. Slightly beyond the scope of our purpose today, but um within the terms of utility costs and electricity, do we? Consider expanding our solar coverage?
No.
Is there something worth exploring?
Um.
So you think there's quite a bit of like roof space left, certainly down like the. Barrages.
Well, we did the project with the county, that was all assessed, so what, what was done. Met the requirements for the grant, I mean, we can look into it, but. It's up to the council.
My G P, have you heard of uh? Some good programs that are out there that is gonna offset the. The cost of the. The work.
No, but I will begin my inquiry.
And offset any warranties they may void on the roof?
Well, it, it already exists, so I'm thinking.
Yeah.
We, we may have some.
Yeah, my recollection was they did the analysis, so they, they max, they max the space unless the sun's changed orbit, which. Couldn't be prob, possible for those. Um, I think they had maxed out the capability of, you know, something we can look into. Uh, forty, forty-one, forty-one. Forty is court. Forty-one C I F will do later, so we'll use my version, not the Tom version, the other Tom version. We'll do that later and then look at the last page for current is forty-two. For the clarification on the debt. And there's the RUD, RUD's at five oh one nine eighty-two, that's what we have to put aside from collecting taxes and then you see the total. Sixteen million eighty-seven, five seventy-seven. Doing good on pine mayor, the only other pages I was gonna cover before we do a T V timeout for you guys to grab. You know, some food and then. Chief to come in is fifty-one and fifty-two. Those are the pages Tom referred to when he talked about the debt services.
Yep, we can move to that. Are there any questions from the council with regards to the schedules?
I think so, thank you.
Right, mayor, I'll pause the recording, we'll take a T V timeout and then. Circle back in a few minutes, I'll grab the chief and then we'll start with P D. Pages twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty-four, the P D, same common animal control, and then we'll do recreation. A little capital, and then, you know, we'll try to end before seven, just. We get ready for the next meeting at seven, that's all right.
Yep, no problem. J P, do you have internet?
Nope.
You don't either? I just texted uh Jim, Michelle, do you hear?
That's easy.
All right, good evening, we're back in session um to uh continue with our. Budget hearings this evening, um. Just before we go to uh our next presentation, I did wanna acknowledge all of the staff that's here this evening, the leadership of the. Organization who um has worked several, several, several hours on uh presenting tonight's budget, so. Thank you all for being here. Um, I know that we have some other departments that are coming in later that are scheduled, but um wanted to mention that we, the council appreciates um. The work that's gone into the budget, um the deliberations behind the scenes that we don't see. To get us to this uh budget presentation and then certainly the work that's been put to. Towards tonight's presentation, so we are going to move on um to item five on the agenda, so this is um our police department. Um, we do have members of the public uh this evening, so if you could just also introduce yourselves, that would be helpful.
Acting chief, Joe Diannabel. Acting lieutenant, Dan Bigel. Chief, I'm on page twenty-eight and twenty-nine. If the council has any questions, and then maybe you could just give an overview of the operations currently in the department in San Rom, that would be helpful.
Overview. We currently have twenty-three total officers, uh two lieutenants. Five sergeants. And dispatch. We have four full timers. And I think we're up to seven. Part-time dispatchers, we're on a little bit of a hiring process due to some. Uh resignations and people have moved on to other things. Um, also within our police department, uh one of our part-time dispatchers is in police academy uh for class two special. What else would you like to go over view?
The council has any questions on the budget for? Twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Overtime. Okay, um. I see where we budgeted previously is two fifty. Um. Two hundred and seventy thousand, last year we charged one fifty-seven. We're budgeting two-ten. Do you think that's gonna be enough for overtime?
Um, so we had an officer on military leave last year. So we budgeted, we, we budgeted a little bit higher than I think in the years past. We came in. Um. A little bit under than what we anticipated. Um, I think two-ten, we have an officer out on injury. Um, that's probably gonna take us till about halfway through the year. Uh, we also have another officer that is um. Potentially getting surgery. Uh, I think that number is. Gonna be sufficient, based on last year.
And then sitcom. Okay, I've noticed in sitcom under uh, well, under salaries and wages, that there's been quite, you know. We were laid out four hundred and seventy, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five, and we're anticipating over five hundred thousand. Is that when you said we're hiring?
Yes.
Overtime expenses.
Okay. So that will reduce the overtime in sitcom, okay.
Michelle, anything? I have this strange face on.
Yes, everybody had a different page.
Um, I don't have anything right now.
Okay.
And anything O E M on thirty, wanna mention?
Yeah. Uh, so the. Next year, this coming year's budget, uh relatively the same, the only increases that we have are for two. Um, two, two projects that we wanna implement this year, first is uh. The continuation of the mutual aid service, mutual aid is a software platform that we use uh in emergency management for communicating with. Other agencies during emergencies, um so we use it regularly with, uh for example, Newton Hospital where they have. Um. Different things that go on there, it's a secure way of sharing video, radio transmissions, voice communications, text. All over the uh internet, so that's something that we acquired several years ago during COVID and we. Believe if I'm mistaken, was uh covered under the American Rescue Plan Act, so all of the. Uh, equipment and uh three years worth of service were included in that initial purchase. However, now we're going to need to uh budget to cover the annual service fee, which is about fifteen hundred dollars. Um, so that's one of the increases, the other increase would be for a uh. Uh, service agreement for the radios that we have for the uh the I C S system. The I C S system ties our radios into a cloud-based service, uh version. So that's just to keep our radios maintained throughout the year, issues come up, the, our vendor will come and take care of it, so that we can ensure that. The system's up.
Then just one other item on thirty, I'll note the. First aid squad had asked for an increase, so we raised the eight to first aid from thirty thousand to thirty-five thousand on the bottom of page thirty. Now we'll go to page thirty-four. Chief, anything uh you can tell us about the exciting world that is animal control?
Yes, um, so you will see an increase there. Um. That is, last year we took on several towns only halfway through the year. Um, we did have to uh go into our um fund that holds uh licensing and. Donations, uh we did have to go into that fund a couple of times last year. Um, to pay for some things, so I would like to increase that. Um. To. Reflect the towns that we are now providing uh throughout the year rather than. Only half of the year from last year.
Are you specifically talking about uh the line items under animal control that has to do with like tools, equipment, medical, kennel costs? Okay, right.
Right.
As opposed to the salary line?
Medical fees.
Right.
Yes.
So. That brings up an interesting question, right? So um for all of the nonprofit animal. Rescue organizations, so. Parks and others, um. They are able to take donations monetarily and in kind for their operations, uh rescuing animals. So since this is a municipal department, um. Are we able to also take those types of donations?
Yes, we're actually working uh currently on a five oh one C four.
Okay, so yeah, Terry, you have water, okay, yeah, so that would be um a five oh one C three under.
It won't be under the town of Newton.
Okay.
Under, uh, I believe they named it um Sussex County Happy Tales.
Okay.
Because it is um not just for us, it's for all the towns that we serve.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, so then that provides then the umbrella opportunity for us to take uh monetary donations as well as in-kind donations. Um, and if we were to do a. Proactive social media campaign or some other kind of campaign, or if somebody wanted to do a fundraiser, that five oh one C three um would allow us to, to do that. Um. So who? Ends up managing that?
Uh, we're gonna have a board, we are working on board members, um. We also are working on getting an attorney. Um, uh. A finance person that's all volunteering their time for this.
Okay, and so then our lead animal control officer would be kind of the staff liaison to that nonprofit board, right?
He won't be on the board, no, nobody from the town of Newton will be on, on that board.
Okay, okay. Okay. Um, it's a future question, um but then, you know, I. Have the experience that when you ask, uh, things magically show up, and I think we would have to think then about storage and capacity and facilitation.
So, so one of the things that I do want to use that fund that I was talking about uh is for like a shed.
Okay.
To put on that property. For storage.
Okay. Okay. Interesting, thank you. Um, and then it. Since I'm asking questions, Lieutenant Dan, um. The. I always think of you as kind of our I T, I'm like bless you, cutting edge, whether it's O E M, police department, et cetera. Um, this year, uh, or actually the last eighteen months, the big project was um. Getting the licensing and instituting our drone capabilities, um also to help in a mutual aid. Facilitation when needed, um, any, are we gonna just kind of continue with that, or is there anything else uh? That you have on your radar, no pun intended, this year?
Take each other to the toy store.
So we're adding new pilots this year, started with uh just Detective Max and myself as the initial pilots, um. You know, to operate the program, uh, we have three other uh officers now, we're training to get their F A licenses to operate uh. Operate all aircraft, so we wanna expand a little bit by that, that way. We also, one of the things that we've been looking at, um. It's, it's kind of difficult right now for us to deploy quickly and that's one of the key things uh to make it as useful and as valuable tool as possible is to be able to deploy quickly.
Hmm.
So uh, cause as it is right now, things are stored in Pelican cases, we gotta get it out of the station, load it in.
Fly out of the garage, wherever, yeah.
All this stuff, um. So, trying to think creatively, you know, knowing how. Budgets um are always, you know, stretched thin as they are, uh, we. Applied for a grant and actually successfully received a grant from the Governor Bigley Foundation uh to obtain uh what's called a, a truck ball.
Uh huh.
And basically what it is, is a storage unit for. All of our equipment inside of a vehicle, also has like a television screen so that when we're operating, you know, what we found is right now. If I'm at a scene and let's say it's a fire or something like that, I have all of the. Scene command staff like huddled over my shoulder, watch, watch what's going on, so we could plug it into a television, so have the command staff be able to see what we're seeing. Communicate without having that, that type of thing, also have a lot of our equipment stored in there, so it's quick and easy to deploy. As useful as possible. As useful as possible. Um, and so with this grant, we'll be able to cover that, so.
I was kind of envisioning like a little mini hangar on top of the roof that you could remote control open and the thing just launches from there.
Yeah, yeah. Good suggestion, man. No, I mean honestly, those are things that um that that's the way it is going. There are uh a lot of the big cities all have this now where there's like a drone in a box on a rooftop and you have these deployed throughout different places uh throughout your city and
And it opens it.
Yeah, your pilots are in the station somewhere and can, you know, can fly them remotely and uh, you know, deploy them from wherever they are. So um, it's a little ways away, but we're making the same one.
I was gonna put in money for a bat signal.
That signal is important.
Is it this sticker that's gonna be? I think you're giving us a preview of the sticker that's now on Michelle's.
Uh, Chief and Lieutenant Dan, how about the dispatch improvements, tasers, the OEM ICS and current stuff you wanna?
Sure, uh, we have all of our taser equipment in. We are awaiting Axon to come in and train us as master instructors uh to onboard that uh uh system. What else? Tasers, uh, oh, dispatch upgrade, um nine one one, uh Lumen is uh close to getting to us. I I believe the most updated one was the last week in February. Um, we'll see if that happens. Um, you haven't heard anything else besides?
A little behind down in Somerset County, but probably mid-March will have it in service.
So they can't move on to a new county until the county that they're in is fully up and running. So any little pickups that they have in another county postpones us every time. So we're our, we are most installed other than um Lumen installing their uh.
And what about the OEM ICS?
Uh, so OEM ICS is something that we're still waiting to come through. We're really excited to get that uh hopefully through with the uh the funding that was applied for. Just waited for the green light from uh.
If we could have the record show that Deputy Mayor Dixon has joined us at six fourteen PM.
Then uh in capital, chief. Radio tower, refreshment of the Ford Explorer and the MDTs, LPRs, just touch on those two.
Uh, MDTs are uh local data uh data terminals. They are basically the computers in the cars. Uh, the last time we purchased them was in two thousand and nineteen, so they're getting a little old. Uh, most of them have uh a significant screen burn uh that happens to electronics when a certain screen is displayed for long periods of time and you can log out of some uh systems and you would think you're still in it. That's how bad some of these screen burns are, so.
How old are they roughly?
Uh, two thousand and nineteen, I believe we purchased this. Um, also, the New Jersey um C D S unit is now adding uh security, more security measures um and outdated equipment could uh pose a security risk. They are, um, I'm also uh adding driver's license readers. It makes it easier uh for the officer to pay more attention to uh the car stops that is that they're on rather than typing in all the numbers uh driver's license into that system so they can just scan and it'll it'll come up. Uh, patrol vehicle. Uh, we're asking for another uh fleet vehicle for our patrol. Uh, it would be replacing uh the last uh Ford Explorer in our primary fleet. We still have plenty of explorers that are secondary. They have uh both of the twenty twenty-one Ford Explorers have over sixty-five, seventy thousand miles on them now. Again, may not seem like a ton of miles, but the engine hours are they're up there. Uh, so I would uh move that vehicle down to uh a support vehicle or a vehicle for our special officer. And we could uh potentially get rid of some really old vehicles that we use for traffic that are due to due to leave our uh our custody. ALPRs, automatic license plate readers. Uh, this is an add-on to our current uh in-car camera system. Um, it's integrated into a camera uh through Safely, who is our vendor. Uh, it adds to uh the service of what we already have. It is good for crime prevention, uh investigations, officer safety. It's automatically reading uh license plates. So if uh there's a missing person, uh you know, expired registrations, wanted persons, uh they'll, the officers will automatically get an alert. Either they're with that vehicle or they're in the vicinity of that. We currently have a software called Backtrace, which allows us to utilize other people's ALPRs throughout the state, and it's pretty much the first thing that we look at when we're investigating crimes. To see if we can find a location inside of it. I think it would be um definitely uh a help to one uh our jobs and the safety of the officers, just to know, you know, if there's somebody that they should be paying attention to. Radio tower equipment, I'll speak a little bit on this and then I'm gonna pass it to, as you said, my IT guy. It is antiquated to say the least. Um, we have upgraded all of our car radios, our dispatch, uh our portable radios, and this is the backend where everything we need this for all of our new equipment now to continue to work. It's working fine. At some point, it's it's gonna, it's gonna be a problem, and then we're gonna be fighting to try to replace uh antiquated equipment uh with new equipment on an emergency level rather than proactively looking to uh update, update this uh system. It is uh basically the essential lifeline to all first responders in in the town. Dan, any other uh areas you would like to hit on?
I think you covered it pretty well. I mean, there's, it's a multifaceted problem there because so as you mentioned, the equipment is working that we have now, the repeaters and different radio equipment, without getting too technical, it's all there. Um, it's probably been there since I got hired here. I mean, it's 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 old um and it's working. So that's good, and fingers crossed it'll continue. The problem is it's all well beyond the end of life. So if there is a problem tonight with with one repeater up there, all of our radio communications will stop, and there's no way to repair that because there's no, you know, there's, if they don't support it anymore, there's no replacement for parts and things like that. So it's a big problem and to order, even if I ordered today a brand-new repeater, we're less, the different equipment that we've ordered recently, past couple of years, it's been taking like a year to come in. So um, a year without radio communications for first responders is just too too much of a risk to to take. So I'm glad it's there and it's working. The other part of the problem is that uh the water tower, I don't know if any of you have been to the site up there, but all of that equipment is housed in old structures that we've kind of repurposed there. So like where our stuff is now is a block building that was part of the water system when the water tower was in service that was probably built when that reservoir was used. It's probably, it's probably like a hundred years old. Um, so now the roof is leaking, there's more problems. There's all sorts of issues with the building, and so we're taking, replacing equipment, very expensive equipment, in addition to the ICS system, which will go there as well, um and putting it into this kind of leaky sieve of a building. And so there's repairs that need to be done with the structure as well. Need to repair the roof and take care of some of those mechanical issues, the HVAC system in there, it's it's ancient. So um, this will help take care of most of those issues. Um, and we've been pretty creative about trying to keep the cost down by repurposing some of the things that are there, reusing those old buildings and re, you know, the old building and rehabbing it versus trying to construct something new. Uh, where the part of the building was actually at one point leased out to Nextel. And when they vacated the lease, they left some equipment there, um some grounding equipment and uh coax cable that goes up to the tower and different things that we can actually repurpose and use that are still good uh to keep the cost down because those things can be very expensive rebuilding, something, so.
So this capital allocation that's here um includes the the improvements to the building, the structure?
It's gonna give us some, it's it's not everything we'd like to do, but it's gonna give us a little bit to be able to get at least work, put a new roof on. But it's not gonna be every, like, we're not gonna be able to put a generator and things there that we that we know we need.
Does repurposing the building on a cost basis make more sense than so doing a canister?
Right, so we thought about that. The issue with, uh, so we have a new building up there, the one that they accidentally knocked down. We were gonna repurpose that, but the problem with that is is the chase ways to get all of the lines from the building to the water tower would be astronomical. With this building, they're already there. So I think it would be cost-effective to use this building and rehab the little things that we need. I think it's gonna save us, you know, a lot in the long.
Yeah, and for things like the generator or other improvements, we'll look at grants, we'll look at other things. We need to make this initial commitment, especially with the heavy time on some of this equipment, you know what I mean? So at least this gets us eighty, ninety percent where we want to be and then figure out what what else we can do to support that system.
And this radio tower, the radio system also would support, you know, EMS and the fires, radio system as well.
It's the same system, right?
Yes, just just so everybody knows, the PD is asking for the money. This is gonna be an improvement that affects all the emergency services.
Good point.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our police, police department leadership?
Matt, do you have anything?
No.
Um, all right, we'll switch Finkles and um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in a little bit.
Got it.
Go to thirty-five and thirty-six. Welcome, Barbara.
Hi, we have some members of the public, so if you could just introduce yourselves, that would be helpful.
Hi, I'm Danielle Finkel, I'm the recreation coordinator for the town of New. Assistant to Recreation Department and foreman.
So thanks to you, please, we have increased our audience because I know that we have the president and the secretary, right?
Any questions on thirty-five, thirty-six specifically, otherwise obviously any question about programs or the the pool, I can answer any questions. Want to talk about the success of last year? So mayor, it's up to you, how you wanna handle that.
Two questions first from the council? Maybe while they are deliberating, why don't you guys go ahead and go over the successes and any changes?
Um, so last year was a little different for both of us, so we're both back now, thankfully. Um, so last year went really well, considering that we were here for just half the year. Um, first off, it's helped with flags of honor, which was a great success again. Um, so we're looking forward to getting some more events this year going. So grateful, even.
Let's say on the pool side, we tripled our swim lesson registration through the year prior. And so this year, we're trying to see if we can do that again and adding more events. Fortunately, last year, our Fourth of July got rained out. So we wanna make that bigger than ever this year, as well as adding a Christmas in July event and making sure we have our senior appreciation day in the end of August. But more events, hopefully more swim lessons and parties.
Barbara, what do you think um contributed to the tripling of swim lessons?
I, we started promoting them much earlier. So instead of in June rolling out registration, I started it all the way back in March. Um, trying to individually calling people that had swam with us in the past and then sending out an email blast to everybody that had a membership for the pool for the last four years that had children under the age of eighteen. Um, and doing so, we were able to go from, I think it was eighteen kids to over fifty. And so doing that again and making it even bigger.
And Danielle, I had the um benefit of attending um my first Recreation Commission meeting last month, um and was really impressed with the um synergies of all of the volunteers that currently sit on that um board commission, um and all of the events that are already planned for this year, both with our seniors um and for the town in general. The, I think the thing that we want to um, I think the one suggestion I hear coming out of it is like, how do, what are the ways that we can continue to promote that? So I know you're working with Kimberly and our social media and and other things, um just getting the word out about the events, right? Three of us were at a chamber event the other night and, you know, we briefly just talked about the events that happened in town um in really in collaboration with the college and with others, um but certainly any suggestions that you guys have for us or for the community and helping to just get the word about, word out about the events, because there's a, I know that there's a lot of time and effort that goes into planning them. Um, and uh we always want to try to get as many people there as we can, or at least it could be accommodating, right? Um, so let us know. Okay, budget questions?
Maybe Jen can talk about staffing and our staffing model for the summer and how that compares to last year and if we had a good staffing.
Yeah, I I mean, we, you know, just as they started promoting the swim lessons, we started promoting the open positions early in the year. Um, in fact, actually, they'll probably be going up before the end. Um, as far as the positions, I think we kept lifeguard open just all year, just to kind of, you know, hey, just as a uh a thought process, like we have a pool, everybody knows we have a pool. We're always looking for lifeguards. We're not gonna turn anybody away that's obviously that has um their certification. As far as the staffing numbers, we had a phenomenal year, even in with Barbara's absence and the and, you know, the addition of our member of our pool team. Um, the pool ran seamlessly. Um, the transition uh to operating the pool and having the support staff and that they were up and ready and trained to take over um when she was not available. So we're hoping we're gonna have a lot of those same faces back, and we're gonna have another successful year. And as far as staffing numbers specifics, Barbara could certainly answer that more so, but I think we're pretty much aligning to do and have the same staff numbers we had last year.
I know the pool was a huge success this past summer, like we saw the numbers and the 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 positive comments and, you know, had even some people come to council meetings and and provide positive comments. So um, I think the pool is definitely getting more popular as each year goes on. So I, if you know me, um, I like to have a good time down at the pool. So like the events, like having, you know, Christmas in July and the July fourth event and stuff and and a swim with the seniors and, yeah.
It's not easy. And as long as we keep serving ice cream.
I'm sorry?
As long as we keep serving ice cream.
Actually, the popular one was the slushies this year.
Oh, you're right.
I got the slushy machine. The slushy machine and every day for some though.
Mayor, I just want to say that Barbara and Danielle, yes, they were out half the year, but they did prep us all quite well. They were very detailed, giving us instructions, any, you know, scenarios we might run into, and they were available by phone, so their absence, though we felt it, it wasn't as bad as it could have been, and they were phenomenal.
Absolutely.
I just want that on the record. That was, you know, they were great.
Great. Okay, any other questions? Anything else you want us to know? I think the budget's pretty straightforward. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, that concludes part one.
Is there anything that we can take from the evening um in fifteen minutes?
Not without the crew, so. And I think we'll be good on time, so.
Yeah.
Other stuff's going on later, but.
Pretty quickly.
Yeah, we'll get through it.
Okay, so we're going to uh pause here for our budget hearings, we have our regularly. Terry, are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Uh, welcome to the Newton Town Council Regular Hybrid Meeting of February tenth, twenty twenty-five. For those not standing already, if you please stand and join us in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was beautiful. We please have the roll call?
Mr. Kuss?
Here.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Diglio?
Here.
Mrs. Teeds?
Here.
Mayor LaFois?
Here. In accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice of this reorganization, sorry, that's what it says, Terry. Notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record imposed it on the official bulletin board on January third, twenty twenty-five. We're going to begin, I'm going to ask Chief Danabell to come up to do a presentation this evening from the Gunner J. Bigley Foundation.
Tonight, we are honored to welcome the family of Gunner J. Bigley as they present the Newton Police Department with a generous donation of eight thousand five hundred dollars to support our UAS program. Through the Gunner J. Bigley Foundation, Gunner's legacy continues to make a lasting impact, reflecting on his passion for service and law enforcement. These funds will be used to purchase a truck vault system, ensuring our drone equipment is mission-ready and rapidly deployable in emergencies. We are deeply grateful for the foundation's commitment to public safety and for keeping Gunner's spirit alive through their incredible generosity. Thank you.
Good evening. I did not expect this amount of people. My name is Donna Bigley and together with my husband Jeff, my daughter Ra- uh Rachel and my granddaughter Raylan, we are here on behalf of the Gunner J. Bigley Foundation. In September of twenty twenty-one, our lives were changed forever when we tragically lost our son and brother Gunner. Gunner was a twenty, a graduate of Newton High School, class of twenty twenty. He was a, he was a nineteen-year-old young man who was very charismatic. He was a friend to everyone and truly had the biggest heart. He was a typical teenager enjoying life to its fullest. When you lose someone so young, who had so much yet to give the world, someone with so much potential, the only thing we could think of at the time was, how do we not let Gunner be forgotten? How do we give Gunner a legacy? It had always been Gunner's dream to follow in the footsteps of his grandfather and become a law enforcement officer. Thus, the Gunner J. Bigley Foundation was formed. Our mission is simple. Each year, we provide a scholarship to a Newton High School senior going into the ROTC, the Armed Services, for law enforcement. But our main purpose for our foundation is to make Gunner's dream come true. To somehow make Gunner well-known in the law enforcement community as though he was a member of the force. Every March, the month of Gunner's birth, and every September, the month we lost Gunner, if requested, we will give a grant to a local police department who has taken the time to educate us on the needs for funding within their department. It is not a one-time thing, the Newton Police Department can apply again and again and again. It is our hope that we can establish a long-running relationship with local enforcement agencies, wherein we partner with them in various ways, whether it be funding or assisting in creating a program for the local communities, all in Gunner's name. When given a grant, we only have one request, and that is that you say his name, Gunner. Someone so truly remarkable needs to be remembered. Someone so truly remarkable deserves to have his dream come true. We are thrilled tonight to present the Newton Police Department with a grant in the amount of eighty-five hundred dollars in order for them to expand their drone program. We would like the Newton Police Department to know that the presentation you made to us was exceptional and we would be more than happy to continue to work with you. We would love to know of other initiatives you have in the works and hope that you will reach out to us again when you feel the need. We only ask that you say his name, Gunner.
Are you ready? Andre Gunner, one, two, three.
Gunner, that's great. Thank you so very much, thank you.
Thank you.
So in addition to that very important presentation tonight, um, we also have a couple of oaths that we're going to administer. Um, before we do that, is a brief comment, our municipal police department is responsible for monitoring, I'm sorry, for maintaining law and order within the town of Newton. Their primary purpose is to ensure public safety by enforcing local laws, preventing and investigating crimes, responding to emergencies, and providing community services. They also help maintain peace in addressing issues such as traffic violations, noise complaints, and disturbances. The leadership of Newton's Police Department plays a crucial role in ensuring that these responsibilities are carried out effectively and ethically. The leadership's purposes include strategic direction and vision, operational oversight, accountability and oversight, community engagement, training and development. In essence, the municipal police department and their leadership work together to create a safer, fairer environment while maintaining respect for citizens' rights and fostering trust between law enforcement and the community. Tonight, we have the awesome opportunity to promote, recognize, and officially swear in the Newton Police Department's next leaders. I'm really excited for Chief Danabell, Lieutenant Finkel, and Detective Sergeant Torres. Individually and collectively, they have worked hard, they have demonstrated expertise, dedication, and professionalism. And they have achieved what's necessary to move on to these next stages of their careers. I have no doubt that they will continue to lead the Newton Police Department with excellence. I know they take their responsibilities seriously and will continue to make us proud. To all the officers, the dispatchers, and staff that they will lead, thank you for your continued dedication and commitment. To protect and serve the town of Newton, your service does not go unnoticed nor unrecognized nor unappreciated. And to the family members of our law enforcement team and community, thank you for supporting your loved ones. We know their sacrifices are also yours. Congratulations again to all, we're so incredibly proud of you. At this point, I'd like to bring up Chief Danabell.
Joseph Danabell is a native of the town of Newton, where he grew up and attended Newton School District, graduating from Newton High School in two thousand and one. In January two thousand and four, he began his enforcement career as a police officer and attended the Mars County Police Academy. In two thousand and six, he was hired by the Town of Newton Police Department, where he served as a patrolman for the next five years. In April twenty eleven, Joseph was reassigned to the Detective Bureau. During his tenure, he held several important roles, including evidence custodian, police liaison to the Newton School District, and firearms instructor. His views, he views his experience in the DB as a strong foundation for his continued career growth. In February twenty twenty, he was promoted to Police Sergeant and took command of a patrol squad supervising three patrol officers. He also served as the Lead Firearms Instructor. As a sergeant, he received several accolades, including a Congressional Certificate of Recognition from Congressman Josh Gottheimer as a hometown hero for his courageous actions in extinguishing a fire inside a closed business. Additionally, he was awarded a Visions Life Saving Award from Newton Medical Center for his life-saving CPR intervention. In June of twenty twenty-two, he was promoted to Lieutenant and took over the Support Services Division. In November of last year, he was appointed Acting Chief of the Department.
I, Joseph Danabell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to Saint.
And allegiance to Saint.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the Office of Chief of Police.
Of the Office of Chief of Police.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me not.
Good evenings, ladies and gentlemen, family and friends, esteemed members of the Newton Police Department, distinguished guests, local law enforcement, Town Manager Thomas Russo, Mayor Helen LaFois, the Newton Town Council, and fellow residents of Newton, thank you all for being here today. It is an incredible honor to to stand before you as the newly appointed Chief of Police in this great town. Today marks the beginning of a new chapter for the Newton Police Department and our community. And I am humbled by the trust that has been placed in me. First and foremost, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to the men and women of the Newton Police Department. As I stand before you today, I am filled with an immense sense of pride and gratitude. Each of you represents the heart and soul of this department, embodying the values of courage, service, and integrity that define our mission. Together, we will face challenges that demand not just strength, but also compassion, wisdom, and unity. Every call you answer, every moment you spend protecting and serving our community, you make a difference. You are the shield that stands between chaos and order, the light in the darkest of moments, and the hope that our community relies upon. Your sacrifices, often unseen and unacknowledged, do not go unnoticed by me or the countless lives you touch. Remember, the badge you wear is not just a symbol of authority, it's a promise. A promise to uphold justice, treat every individual with dignity, and strive always to be better than we were yesterday. We are not perfect, and neither is the world we serve. But through integrity, accountability, empathy, and teamwork, we can continue to earn the trust and respect of those we are sworn to protect. I ask you to carry this message in your hearts, you are not alone. This department stands together as a family. When one of us is strong, we all are. When one of us needs support, we lift them up. Lean on each other, learn from each other, and never hesitate to reach out. As your chief, I promise to lead with transparency, fairness, and an unwavering commitment to your safety and success. Together, we will face the challenges ahead with resilience and determination. Together, we will make a difference, not just in our community, but in the lives of each other. I thank you for your service, your bravery, and your dedication. Let us move forward united, inspired, and ready to continue the work that defines who we are. Stay safe, stay strong, and know that I believe in each one of you. Today, we also celebrate the well-deserved promotions of two outstanding individuals who have shown exceptional dedication, leadership, and service to our community. I would like to have this moment to announce the promotion of Daniel Finkel to the position of Lieutenant. He certainly has earned this promotion. Dan's dedication, honesty, and unwavering commitment to ensuring the safety and welfare of the community have left a significant mark on our department. He stands as a role model to his peers and a true leader, exemplifying the values we hold dear. Dan, this promotion reflects your hard work and your exceptional ability to lead and innovate with both determination and empathy. We look forward to seeing you continue to lead our team toward even greater accomplishments. I would also like to announce the promotion of Judy Torres to the position of Detective Sergeant. Judy's unwavering dedication to justice, her exceptional investigative skills, and her commitment to the safety of our community have made a significant impact on our department. She has earned the respect of her colleagues through her professionalism, strong work ethic, and leadership. This promotion reflects not only her hard work, but also her ability to lead with integrity, compassion, and insight. I am excited to see how she will continue to contribute to our team's success as she takes on this new role. At this time, I would like to take a moment to express my sincere thanks to our Town Manager, Thomas Russo, the Honorable Mayor Helen LaFois, and all members of the Newton Town Council. Your leadership, vision, and unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being to our community are truly inspiring. I am grateful for the opportunity to work alongside you to continue moving this great town forward. To my family, my wife Joanna and daughter Meadow, thank you for your unwavering support in this demanding profession. Being the family of a law enforcement officer isn't easy, and yet you always remain resilient in the mission. I truly couldn't do this without you. Joanna, your strength, love, and patience mean the world to me. I am beyond grateful for all that you do. And Meadow, my amazing daughter, I am beyond proud of you. Your dedication, perseverance, and passion as an athlete inspire me every single day. The commitment and hard work you put into your sport shows your strength and determination. And watching you push yourself to be better is nothing short of incredible. Your discipline, your drive motivate me in my own way. I couldn't be prouder to be your father. No matter what challenges come your way, I know you'll face them with the same grit and heart that make you such an outstanding athlete and person. To the residents of Newton, I want to assure you that your safety and well-being are my top priority. This department is here to serve you, protect you, and work alongside you to build an even stronger, more connected community. We are entering a time of growth and change. Together, we will tackle the challenges of the present while preparing for the future. This means ensuring our department remains innovative, fair, and transparent in everything we do. We will focus on crime prevention, community policing, engaging with residents, and building partnerships that strengthen the bond between law enforcement and the people we serve. I also want to emphasize that our commitment to justice will always be grounded in fairness and respect. Every person in this community deserves to be treated with dignity and we will work to ensure that Newton is a place where everyone feels safe, heard, and valued. I know the road ahead will come with challenges, but with the support of this department, the Town Manager, the Mayor and Council, and the residents of Newton, I have no doubt that we will continue to make our town an even better place to live, work, and raise our families. Again, thank you for this incredible opportunity. I look forward to working with all of you to make Newton the safest, most welcoming community it could be. Let's get to work, thank you. One last thing. The Newton Police Department has revitalized its award uh, its award program. Uh, recently, officers. Recently, officers received these awards, and I would just like to make them a matter of record. Lieutenant Finkel Life Saving Award, Lieutenant Finkel and Detective Beck's Queen's Honor Medal Award, Administrative Assistant Carol McNally Chief's Award, Newton Fire and Newton First Aid Squad received the awards, Patrolman Post Life Saving Award, Patrolman Post Life Saving Award, I didn't stutter, those two. Lieutenant Wlansky Medal of Valor Award, Operator Dolan Honorable Service Award, Patrolman Keeling and Patrolman Armstrong Medal of Valor Award, Operator Josh Price Honorable Service Award, Chief DiEnavol Honorable Service Award, Chief DiEnavol Detective Torres Medical Assistance Award, Patrolman Sibley's and Special Officer Koo's Life Saving Award, Operator Derek's Honorable Service Award, Patrolman Keeling Exceptional Motivational Award, Patrolman Bellis Exceptional Motivational Award, Special Officer Koo's Exceptional Motivational Award, Patrolman Harvey Military Service Award.
Dan Finkel was inspired to serve following the heroic acts of first responders on nine eleven. He began his public safety career as a volunteer firefighter within Newton Fire Department in two thousand and two, responding to major incidents such as the Able Oil Explosion. Today, he remains a member of the department and serves as Director of the Fire Museum. In two thousand and three, Dan joined the Newton Police Department as a Public Safety Telecommunicator, where he answered nine-one-one calls for eleven municipalities and contributed to helping modernize dispatch operations. Hired as a police officer in two thousand and six by Chief John Tomasura, he attended the Somerset County Police Academy and spent over thirteen years in the Patrol Division, earning recognition for his expertise in sound judgment. In two thousand and thirteen, he was awarded the Two Hundred Club of Sussex County Medal of Valor for rescuing an entrapped resident from a house fire. Since two thousand and eight, Dan has served with the Newton's Office of Emergency Management and is now the Emergency Management Coordinator, attaining the Advanced Emergency Management Professional and New Jersey Certified Emergency Manager credentials. He helped lead the town's response to major disasters, including Hurricanes Irene and Sandy and the COVID nineteen pandemic. In two thousand and nineteen, he was assigned to the Detective Bureau, leading many criminal investigations and specializing in digital forensics as part of the Sussex County Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Promoted to Sergeant in two thousand and twenty-one, he first led a patrol squad before assuming command of the DB later that year and leading the successful reinstatement of the School Resource Officer Program. He also led the creation of the department's drone unit and the Sussex County Law Enforcement Drone Association. In November of last year, he was assigned as Acting Lieutenant overseeing the Support Services Division, which includes the Detective Bureau, School Resource Officer, nine-one-one Center, Animal Control, Computer Network Security, and Fleet Operations. He is a graduate of the prestigious West Point Command and Leadership Academy and holds a bachelor's degree in public administration from Fairleigh Dickinson University with a master's degree expected later this year. Mayor?
I, Daniel Finkel.
I, Daniel Finkel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
The State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to Saint.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to Saint.
And to the governments established.
Governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
People.
And that I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
For all of the duties.
Of the Office of Lieutenant.
Office of Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
My, uh, my speech is a little shorter than yours. I just want to say thank you to everyone for being here, like, there tonight. Thank you to Town Manager Tom Russo, to the Council there for all of your support, especially thank you to all the men and women of the Newton Police Department, you know, motivate me to do the best I can every single day, show up for him, of course, my beautiful wife and children.
Biggest fan.
You know, they say that leadership is like the sword of damage, is, uh, the more authority that you have, the more responsibility you have. I really feel that way. My just now, especially as a lieutenant, is to show up every day as hard as I possibly can to support everyone, the men and women over here, because they are top-notch, so, so well-heeled. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Detective Sergeant Torres?
Judy Torres, a native of Ocean County, grew up in the Toms River School District. From a young age, she had a strong desire to become a police officer. She pursued a degree in criminal justice at a university in Puerto Rico. Although she successfully navigated a rigorous hiring process, she was ineligible due to not having an associate at that time. In two thousand and sixteen, she returned to New Jersey and applied through civil service. She passed a physical fitness test for the New Jersey State Police and was waitlisted. The following year, in two thousand and seventeen, the Department of Corrections contacted her, and she attended the academy at Seeger. Upon graduating, she was assigned to the Female State Corrections Facility at Nemaha Collection Facility. On December twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, Judy was hired by Newton Chief Michael Richards and attended the Mars County Police Academy. After graduation, she was assigned to patrol. In two thousand and twenty-two, she transitioned to the DB, where she assumed the role of school and community liaison detective. In this role, she coordinated and participated in numerous community activities, such as Coffee with the Cop, Walk to School, and lectures at Sussex County Community College for the Criminal Justice Class and various other events. Throughout her career, Judy has taken on various additional duties and certifications, including becoming a certified child passenger safety technician, lead instructor, and defensive tactics instructor. In November of last year, she was appointed as the Acting Detective Sergeant, responsible for supervising two detectives overseeing criminal investigations and managing the School Resource Officer Program. Mayor?
I, Judy Torres.
I, Judy Torres.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to Saint.
And allegiance to Saint.
And to the governments established.
To the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
To the Office of Detective Sergeants.
The Office of Detective Sergeants.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
My speech is going to be a lot smaller. First, I want to say thank you for everyone showing up, uh, Town Council, Mayor, for swearing me in the second time.
And no, I got two the first time.
Thank you, everybody, for your unconditional support, uh, other agencies that I see here as well, it means the world. My family, my wife, who has been my rock, um, I wouldn't have been able to do it without you. The great department that we have, these guys have been amazing with me, have treated me just like another sister, another person in the department. And that's it. Thank you all for being here.
We're a couple of housekeeping things, they do have a meeting going on after this, so if everybody that is not family can exit to the lobby, officers are going to take a couple photographs in here, and then we'll be out to, uh, say hello to everybody. And last but not least, everybody, please, uh, come down to O'Reilly's on Lower Spring or drink some matitive ties.
While the department is still present, thank you. While the department is still present, I do want to, uh, acknowledge Council's comments as well. Um, we'll start to my left, Councilman Kooz.
Short nineteen years ago, I started serving the town on the First Aid Squad, and not long after, uh, was the introduction of the first new police officer, uh, in town, now the chief. And I think it's really neat to see that progress over that many years, to see, you know, go from brand-new to the chief. And it's very interesting, not only with, uh, Joe, but with Dan and Judy. So both of them grow up through the service to, you know, the positions now, and, and it's, it's very interesting to see them start out on the road, work with them day-to-day, and then they mysteriously disappear to the Detective Bureau, and you don't see them again. You know, I, I have the luxury of working with these men and women every single day, or most days, believe it or not. And it's, it, it's an understatement to say that we have a valuable police department, that we have an excellent police department, you know, introduce what adjective you want. But, um, I just want to take an extra step and say that Dan Finkel is an unbelievable asset to this town. There's a lot of things that go on in the background between his administrative work at the Police Department, as well as his position as the town's Emergency Management Coordinator, that doesn't really get recognized publicly, because you just see messages coming out, and you don't see a name attached to those messages, or a face attached to those messages. And the amount of work that goes into that position is absolutely unbelievable, and I don't know what we, I don't know where we'd be without Dan leading the hell in that realm. So thank you very much for your work, Dan. Um, and, but, you know, that goes to everyone. Keep up the great work. See you out there.
Councilman Niglio? I basically concur with everything that JP has said. I've known Joey since he was a very young boy. Him and my son went to school together and grew up together, so I am extremely proud of him. Dan, I've known you for a long time, and I am so proud that you are now Lieutenant. And Julie, what can I say? We've been friends since you got on this force. It's a pleasure, and I love our water fights.
Water fights?
Yeah, water fights.
But, um.
I also want to thank every one of you policemen. You do a magnificent job. Our dispatchers do a wonderful job, and this town is in great hands with all of you serving this town. Thank you for your service.
Councilwoman Dixon, Deputy Mayor Dixon.
Thank you. I just echo and raise sentiments. Congratulations to you three, well-earned promotions. Being a paramedic, I interface with a lot of different police departments all over the state, and, um, it always just strikes me how great of a police department we have here, and that starts at the top with the leadership, so, thank you, guys.
Councilwoman Tease?
I got nothing. I don't know any of you guys. I just want to say congratulations, echo everyone's comments, um, and... Sorry? I didn't think I would get... So, yeah. Um, Sandy and I joked at the reorg meeting that, uh, we can call Joey Joey, because when you've known Joey as long as we have, you can call him Joey. If you don't know him that long, he's Joe or Chief. And then to, uh, to Judy, my gosh, we have fun. All the kids at the park when you're there, at the schools when you're there, the multiple times I've seen you at ShopRite, and we can't get out of ShopRite, and, uh, they just adore you, um, and you are a great asset to the community, as is everyone here. And Dan? I'm sorry. So, um, yeah, so I think, uh, JP mentioned, you know, like, nineteen years ago, you know, you first met, uh, some of these guys, and so thirty-three years ago, uh, I met, well, probably not thirty-three years ago, but Dan, I've probably known you the longest. To this day, I'll still take credit for you getting through the academy. You are by far the brother I never had, and I love you all. Be safe.
Thanks, Michelle. Chief DiEnavol, uh, congratulations again. I'm trying to think, you were in patrol in two thousand and eight, right? Right. When I first met you, um, and, uh, you were kind of the one that would sit in the crowd, like, thinking. You were, and it would be every so often, I'd be like, so what do you think? Or what are, what are you observing? And you always had this kind of, like, just let me observe and watch and learn. I think every police officer, um, has that skill, of course, um, but you have always come to me as someone that's being thoughtful, um, about what you're going to say, about what you're going to do, um, be data-informed, and I have no doubt, as I said earlier, that you're going to, uh, lead the, lead the force as you have, uh, as an officer, um, with integrity and professionalism, um, in collaboration and in consensus, um, by always leading to do the right thing. So congratulations again, um, on, on being named officially chief tonight. Lieutenant Dan, I have been chuckling and wanting to say that. I've been saying it to my family, Lieutenant Dan. I want to go watch Forrest Gump now, Lieutenant Dan. But, you know, as Michelle and so, and so many other people say, I feel like every time that we sit down in an official meeting, um, where you're wearing one of your many hats, I'm learning from you. And I think one of the goals that so many people, um, subscribe to, but never really get to do, is to be a lifelong learner, right? You hear so many people say, you know, I want to be a lifelong learner, but, um, in the time that I've known you, in the, in the long time that I've known you, um, you're either in some class, you're learning some technology, and then you're leaving it and putting it into action. And I think as, uh, JP was saying, that's why we have many of the initiatives that we have, because you've heard about it, learned about it, um, and then brought it to the town and have implemented it. And we have so many things, um, that we are leading law enforcement in, not only in the county in northern New Jersey, but throughout New Jersey, um, because you've brought those initiatives, you've had, um, leaders ahead of you that have supported, um, what you're trying to implement, and then you turn around and learn everything that you can about it, teach everybody else, and implement it with success. And so, uh, excited that you are now Lieutenant Dan officially, um, and I know we'll continue to do that, um, so congratulations to you as well. Detective Sergeant Torres, I just can't stop smiling. It was just happened to be my luck, really, that I got to swear you in tonight again, and I remember saying when you first came on the squad that you, I was so proud because you were our first full-time female police officer in the history of Newton. And to see what I think is not that much time has passed, right? I mean, it has, right? But since that time, to see you progress in the department, and like JP said, like, I, I feel like every time I turn around, you're in a different uniform or no uniform, because you went to the, the DB. But when I think of you, and as Michelle alluded to, I think of community policing, I think of relationship building, I think of, um, being proud of the uniform that you wear day in and day out, and I also think of you as someone who, um, also mentors others. And, uh, I think because you've had great mentors, right? And that you want to turn around and make sure that, um, if you have success, everybody else around you has to have success as well. And so I just want to congratulate you, um, um, because if you were our first female full-time police officer, then you are our first detective, detective sergeant, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, uh, thank you for, uh, being our first in so many ways, and we look forward to your continued leadership as well, and to the whole department. You guys are awesome, I say this all the time, I think you're the best department. Definitely in the county, if not northern Jersey and beyond, and, um, Tom and his team and the council, uh, we are always singing your praises, we always will support you, um, and the entire law enforcement team, um, that you give so selflessly to the town each and every day. You show up when in uniform and even not. I was here last Friday performing a wedding, and the chief was coming in on his day off, um, and said... and said, I just live right down the street, so it's really easy to do that and I'm happy to do it. And I think that's the tone that you continue to set. Not that I'm saying you guys need to come in on your day off. We're in budget hearings right now and we were looking at the overtime line. Not that about that, it's just about the about the culture. So congratulations to all of you. And Godspeed.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna continue with our meeting. I know you all would love to stay for that, but are probably not going to, so please go right ahead. The doors. We'll take a moment to let you.
I had something actually really loud and then I was like, oh, I'm just gonna go walk the strip. Like, you know.
Not gonna get through it.
Family airplane.
I know.
Like you said, he's a brother to you. Yeah, so I can see.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I go, I go for everything. I'm a little behind. So like, let's get in there, but this is a little bit slow. Oh, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna continue. We have a approval of minutes from January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, the reorganization meeting. Any changes, additions, okay, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January fifteen, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio, a second by Deputy Mayor Dixon. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Wait, you were?
You were there.
I was. Yes.
Mayor LaFois.
Yes. And then we have the minutes from the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio, a second by Deputy Mayor Dixon. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Now I can say.
And Mayor LaFois?
Yes. All right, at this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. Do we have anyone? Please come on up to the microphone and please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record. The microphone right back there, yep. That's okay. Thank you. Name for the record, please.
My name is Kathleen Starott. And I am the president of Frontline Seniors here in Newton. And the reason why I wanted to get up and speak is first of all, to thank the town council for how they have generously supported our club over the years. Every year, if it wasn't for the town council, our club would not be existing. We've been in existence since twenty oh-two. So it's a long club here in Newton and probably in the county that are still existing. And we feel it's very vital that we continue to help the seniors. We just wanna get more word out to the seniors that we do exist and we keep trying to get more and more seniors. So any way you can help us to get some more advertisement out there, it would give me some suggestions. I have asked the new president, I will tell you, the club was dying until we had the new election. And I became president and everybody was very happy and I'm grateful for that. And I am somebody who has a lot of experience with doing things like this, but all I wanna do is make sure that the seniors are recognized for everything that they have done over the years and that they're still here. And they wanna be able to go and do things. I can tell you, I currently now have things planned for the seniors in this club for almost the entire year. If it is going for lunch or dinner, we're going out to Riverview in North Carolina, Pennsylvania to see some shows. And that's all because of this council giving us enough money to get through the year in most cases. But we have to rent buses to go anywhere, so that kinda digs into it. But I just, the reason why I wanted to get up and say something is to also say, thank you for making me the volunteer coordinator of the seniors. I was shocked when I got that. Thank you so very much. I'm very proud of it. And thank you for being there for us. And we're there for you if we can do anything.
And we have an ice cream social on Thursday, right? Yes.
I'll be there to talk to some of the people at Liberty Towers because they have asked, I think I'll tell it right now. They have something to make here at the Christmas luncheon. Asked me if it could possibly be a night fortune of my senior. And I said, it's something I will consider definitely, because we tried to consider it and we got knocked out in the previous. So I said, yes, I'm going to meet with, I can't remember her person again, but I told her, yes, I will come and actually, Sandy, thank you for being our liaison all these years. And Sandy is gonna go with me to Liberty Towers and Pat, our secretary, and you see her also sitting right there. She will be there. We're going to talk with them. It's for the working people that live at Liberty Towers who cannot get to our daytime meetings. So we said, yes, I see my time is up. But thank you so much for giving me a few minutes to talk. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Starott.
I couldn't say that. My time is up. I will tell you, we meet the third Wednesday very much. Temporarily, we're meeting at the graduate squad. As soon as the firehouse number one reopen, we'll be back there. That's our hope. And open thirty-nine. And the news is only ten dollars a year. So I think so too.
Is there anyone else from the pub?
Yeah, any other questions?
She's gonna take our jobs, nice. Any other comments from public? All right, Tom, any comments from any of our members joining us on Zoom? All right, seeing none, we'll close the first open public session. We'll go now onto council and manager reports. Mr. Russo?
Just to note the proclamation for February for Black History Month, Mayor.
Okay, anything else? Councilmember Kuss? Councilmember Diglio?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Teets?
Nothing at this time.
Deputy Mayor Dixon?
Nothing at this time.
And the only thing that I have is last Friday evening, it was supposed to be Thursday because of the snow, it was Friday. Councilwoman Teets and Councilwoman Diglio and I attended the Greater Newton Chamber of Commerce fundraiser up at the college. I think it was a well-attended event, if not sold out. And I think about eighty-five percent of the room were non-Newton residents, so it was nice to have people from out of town coming into town and we were asked them to make sure they come back and go to our restaurants and see shows and attend all of the great events that are happening throughout the year here in town. We have no unfinished business. We'll get back to our budget hearings after the general course of the meeting. And we do have second reading and public hearing on a couple of ordinances. So the first one is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one. This is an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a land donation known as block five point zero four, lot five, commonly known as Seven Cherry Street. At this time, I'll open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance? Anyone online, Tom? All right, seeing none, we'll close the hearing to the public. Any discussion from the council?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. So to my awareness, there is no plan to develop this land on the town's behalf. We have no one planned for it. It's currently vacant land that exists. But it's also a ratable property. And if we accept this donation and then remove the ratable property off of our rolls without any intention or plan to use that, I personally don't see the need to accept this donation.
Other comments, considerations, thoughts? Mr. Kuss, do you know what the tax, the ratable, annual ratable on this property is?
Historically, it was just around thirty thousand, but I believe it was reassessed this year somewhere a little less than that. It's in the tens of thousands.
Fourteen to my recollection?
Possibly.
Mr. Russo, what do we know about the donation?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen.
Received a request from the property owner. He's looking to unload the property. It's adjacent to other municipal properties, so what they need would just be to expand open space in the community. We have no skin in the game either way.
It's also a property that was very recently marketed for sale.
Any other conversation? I see Councilwoman Dixon contemplating. Any comments?
Tom, in the future, would we be able to use this open space area for people to hike and walk is since it's adjacent to two other pieces that we own?
We don't have plans to turn it into a recreation area at this time.
No, okay.
We just leave it pristine.
Is that something potentially that could happen?
We haven't.
Based on the topography?
Yeah.
Thought about.
It's going down the road grade. It's off of, it's like the Harrison Street neighborhood. It's a hot spot.
It's a hot spot. Any other conversation? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to act on the ordinance?
I read like subject to a time, like if we don't say, we'll take your donation, like because if it's for sale and I agree with, you know, it's another ratable, like why? Why take on the responsibility for that property? If there's no benefit?
It's a policy decision. It's adjacent to other municipal property. He's looking to unload it. He approached the town. We had the assessor look at it, the engineer look at it, and I told him I would run it up to Flagpole because he asked to do something. There's no right or wrong answer.
And is it better to get something than nothing? You know, as far as ever tax revenue?
Would it be something that we would try to sell? If acquired?
Looking at how much in tax money that comes in, fifteen thousand is what they pay on that particular piece of property?
So if I do not have a motion and a second to introduce, then it goes nowhere.
Yeah, yeah, or you can, you can just do a motion to table it without a date and it'll just kill, it'll kill it as well. And then you could always bring it, you know, reintroduce the ordinance if down the river, you wanna decide if the option is still accepted donation is still there for the property.
I just wouldn't make the motion in seconds. Unless the majority interested in accepting, I'll just let the property owner know that the municipality wasn't interested, so we can put it to bed.
Yeah, because if I don't have a motion in a second, I mean, that's what will happen. So no actions taken?
The other way to look at it is, you know, even if it's a burden on the property owners to pay the taxes and that's why they're trying to offload it. They stopped paying it over tax auction, we might still, you know, receive money for it or it'll end up in the town's.
Possession anyway. Right, that's why I asked if we would turn around and try to sell it. All right, so seeing no motion or nor a second, we'll let that be. All right, moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two. This is an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement the town code of the town of Newton, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, chapter two sixty-six of the town code entitled Streets and Sidewalks, most notably section two sixty-six dash forty-two entitled Notices. At this time, I will open the hearing to the public. Seeing none in person, Tom, do we have anybody online?
Not for this.
All right, seeing none, I will close the hearing to the public. Do I have a motion to act on the ordinance?
I have a question to ask before we act on it. Okay, I noticed when I read it that we are literally taking having the responsibility of the notices, putting it into the hands of the DPW department. Why did we decide to take it from the municipality and put it in the hands of the DPW?
Mr. Russo?
Because the DPW would be more in tune with what we're doing as far as roads rather than the municipal clerk.
Okay. So essentially, it's all the work that the road department's doing, not the clerk's office is doing, so having them be responsible for the notifications makes sense operationally and streamlines it correct. Any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Dixon and a second by Councilwoman Teets. Why can't I get last names tonight? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three. This is an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement the town code of the town of Newton, County of Sussex, State of New Jersey, chapter one oh-five entitled Filming, most notably section one oh-five dash three entitled Issuance of Permits and section one oh-five dash four entitled Performance of Permit Holder. At this time, I'll open the hearing to the public. Seeing no one in person, Mr. Russo, anyone online?
Not for this.
Seeing none, I'll close the hearing to the public. Any discussion? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash three.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion to introduce by Councilwoman Teets and a second by Deputy Mayor Dixon. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes. All right, we have one ordinance for introduction. Tom, can you provide an overview, please?
Yeah, just the annual cap bank, as Tom Ferry mentioned during the budget hearing, to go from the two and a half percent to the three and a half percent as allowed by law.
All right, this is an ordinance to, this is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four. This is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank. Do I have a motion to introduce?
I will make the motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four.
Okay, I have a motion to introduce by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Deputy Mayor Dixon. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kuss?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes, and the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four will be held on Monday, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven o'clock PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Tom, can you please review the consent agenda items?
Sure, seventy-seven is an amendment to the contract for chem supply extension. Seventy-eight is I-bank related. Seventy-nine is a refund. Eighty is a refund. Eighty-one is disclosure contract for firehouse furniture for Firehouse One. Eighty-two is the annual renewal for Glenn Spicer, bless you. Eighty-three is the annual renewal for renewal for Doragail Spicer. Eighty-four is the renewal for Dad's Taxi. Eighty-five is a couple of school crossing guards to approve, bless you. Eighty-six, approve transfers and bills and vouchers.
All right, so I have any resolutions that any council member wants to remove for discussion or otherwise? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to offer the consent agenda?
I will offer the consent agenda as presented.
I will second the consent agenda.
I have a motion for the consent agenda by Councilwoman Teets and a second by Councilwoman Diglio. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kuss?
You're standing on check one, two, five, zero, one. Yet other ones?
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. Teets?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes. All right, at this point, and then we- All right, at this point in the meeting, we'll reopen the meeting to the public for any comments. Anyone?
Good evening, Wayne McCabe, one twenty five five street. The team here come up before you with the president of the Sussex Historical Society. It's all about the next thing you have on your discussion list, construction permitting creation. If you may recall, a few months ago, I sent in a letter after having been told by the town construction official that while one permit, one trade project of reopening the academy building on Main Street. Is going to come in with a price for the permit of seventy five hundred dollars. It's a one trade issue. There's nowhere near enough time needed for inspection to warrant seventy five hundred dollars. You have a two hundred and five thousand dollar project. It's most likely going to go up to a full quarter million with the extras that we can anticipate getting from the contract. I also have, as I'm sure that many of you are aware, another issue on the rear part of that building where a section of our Masonry wall has decided to make a bow out. So we've stabilized it. We have a structural engineer with unit plans. And we're going to have to repair that. I'm looking at about a twelve thousand dollar bill for that. Not counting any construction permit we have made in the subject. Our county's local society is a five oh one C three nonprofit. And we're in the process of renovating that building, stabilizing it so that it will keep weather out. And then proceeding to restore the buildings for a new use. One of the main new uses in that building is going to be a children's museum. And I'm simply asking the council, in this instance, to waive the construction fee. So that we can use the money instead of for a permit fees, we can use it perhaps for brick and mortar, but literally. If that's not possible, if you can't see way through to that. I would offer you a suggestion so that there's no concern about it spreading out and being used for life or my others in a large scale. If you just put a set of restraints on it on that decade. If you put a set of restraints on it, then it has to be on the national register of physical places. That the application is being by the property owner by a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. And that is for a complete restoration of a project, you will find upon yourself limited very quickly in who can apply. And who can get that grant of assistance. If that cannot be done. I would offer you to say, I will, on behalf of our society, we're prepared to pay for the hourly rate of an inspector. But if I think the number of hours of inspection be involved here for this project, you may be billing out at about right now six to seven hundred dollars an hour. Cause there's very little inspection needed for this project. I'm asking you tonight to help us, to help our community. And the time is up. You sure that's three minutes? That's my pitch to you, ladies and gentlemen. We need your help. We have a lot of work ahead of us. And I'd rather split the money into construction and restoration that have to be used. Then paying a construction permit. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration for this.
Any other? Public comments? Tom, do we have any online?
Not at this time.
All right, so we'll close uh the second public session and we will move on to the discussion of the construction permit fees. Mr. Russo.
Yeah, so we had to receive the request late last year from the county historical society for the waiver of building construction permit fees. Kat and I did some research on other municipalities. Um twelve responded, eleven said that they do not waive these types of fees. The only affirmative response was from Sparta. So I'm looking for a direction from the council tonight. Obviously, Mr. McCabe is here, so he will hear the deliberation and your the decision and outcome. But um from the staff perspective, we didn't feel comfortable making this recommendation since a third of the properties in the town are already tax exempt, so they're not paying property taxes and we caution against giving an additional financial benefit that the residents and businesses aren't favorable towards, so or do not receive, but in the end, it's a policy decision for the majority of the governing body to give me direction either way, so thank you. And then you also have a copy of the email from Joe Budo. Um since twenty ten, when we started the shared service, there's been four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in exempt fees that have been waived. So in twenty twenty four, we had fifty three thousand that were waived, so.
And Tom, what was a criteria for those being waived and can you provide examples of did uh I don't know that I saw that if?
Joe?
Yeah.
Um, well, you'd have to have some sort of criteria. Nonprofit, you know, five oh one C three religious, you know, you'd have to work with legal counsel to come up with some sort of a criteria so that it's not arbitrary that you're cherry picking one organization like versus another. Since we've had requests over the years for, you know, Saint Joe's and other places that we've turned down because, you know, they're not exempt from construction permit fees and it's not based on an hourly. Obviously, it's based on the cost of the construction, you know. I'm sure many of you have upgraded air conditioning systems or plumbing or electrical, right? And you fill your jacket out, right? You do it the right way. I'm sure we all do and then it's a percentage, right? And you you're paying the fees so that the construction official and the department can review plans and do different things. So it's not based on an hourly per se, it's based on the cost of the improvements, et cetera.
Mr. Ferry, do you have anything to add to the discussion? Um, I know that we were just talking about this, but uh and I think Mr. Russo just said this as well, but um based on the current budget and the evaluations that you just did, we are still sitting north of thirty percent of our properties in town being non ratable properties. Inclusive of all nonprofits, churches, college, hospital, et cetera, et cetera. Um and because.
Just mayor, you know. With the exempts, the ratable base would be almost one point six billion. Sure. With the exempts, the total ratable base would be almost one point six billion. The exempts were almost five hundred million dollars. So it's almost a third of the town is exempt and obviously I would, you know, keep in mind the discussion you just had about the ordinance that was defeated. You just denied a request for a donation because of the fifteen thousand dollar impact. This obviously is much greater than that on an annual basis as it relates to um, you know, the exemption of permit fees. So and certainly from Hardeston's stand standpoint. That means they would be going out doing the work without any compensation, which might cause them at some point to come back to renegotiate the shared service. Because the shared service we have obviously with them, the five year contract was based on the assumption of existing structure, right? So in fairness to them, not to tell them how to do their business, but if I were them, I would come back to Newton and say we have, we need to renegotiate this. Because now they'll be going out potentially on additional work without any type of money coming in, so it's.
And that's why I was just gonna ask that essentially, we're still having to compensate Hardeston for the inspections and the work that they do because we're under contract to do so.
Seventy five hundred doesn't come to us directly. It goes to Hardeston and then based upon a formula. They pay us. Now, last year, we budgeted seventy thousand. We didn't hit the threshold this year. So we only got forty thousand out of seventy eight thousand from Hardeston. So we actually shot really low. Which are, of course, our budget, cause now we budgeted seventy, you only got forty. Now we can only budget forty because it's based upon realized or the contract, but.
Right, and we're sitting currently in the
This year would be.
In the budget hearings, and so we've been going line on by line on, and we know that what that implication is. Other discussion from council?
I'll speak from a very narrow perspective because I dance around a conflict if we're entertaining strictly nonprofit organizations. But, you know, one potential avenue to look at here is strictly within the guise of historic preservation, if that was to be entertained. Um, you know, some sort of quasi grant program and maybe some sort of discounted rate strictly through the guise of historic preservation purposes. Because we do have, you know, some historic element that lead market as a town. And, you know, there's, there's a different perspective here, I think, than the property donation. Because there is an intent, there is a potential value here. We have historic properties that could potentially benefit from this. Because, you know, it is expensive to renovate, rehabilitate historic programs. Um, but in terms of a blanket nonprofit exemption, I can't speak to that. Without potentially be the only avenue if we wanted to maybe explore that.
So what if you did a fifty percent savings? If the property is demonstrated to be on the state and national registries.
I think that's what Mr. McCabe provided in his testimony is some sort of guidelines around that. Um, so let's just play that out. Uh, Mr. Kuz, um, so that would be something that would be and a consideration by the Historic Advisory Commission um to be cemented by resolution through the planning or land use board or play that out for me? Or is that a municipal decision based on application?
It's not a land use application, so it's administrative.
So so I I would say, you know, maybe even take what he's suggesting is just, you know, if a property ends up on the federal register where uh the the National Historic Register of the states that that in and of itself meets the criteria.
Wayne, are you state and national?
I mean.
Are you Wayne? Sorry, mayor, are you on the state and national registries?
Yes, you are.
All right, so then I would use that as a criterion.
Counsel, your position?
My position is if you're gonna do anything, that it would have to be, in my opinion, amending the ordinance, smending the code specifically under the construction.
Can you just speak into your microphone or purpose of record and Mr. McCabe in the back?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate what my my position is, is if you're gonna do anything and make any type of uh you know, criteria or guidelines that you do so by amending the ordinance, not by resolution. Straighten the code when we talk about construction permitting fees, we can put uh an exception or or a uh reduction or some sort of, you know, sub subsection and have the criteria in there. But that, you know, when when our office first looked at this, that was my our immediate uh response was if you're gonna do anything, it's gotta be codified. So there's, there's no like precedence or people don't have the history as to what happened. It's clearly spelled out. Um, and Tom brought up the only other issue I had was the potential effect on the shared services agreement, but he he brought that to your attention.
So short of anything else, I would definitely, you know, I think it would be valuable information to see a catalog of properties we are potentially talking about in town presently. What exit properties are on the registers and, you know, entertain the conversation with Hardeston and see what their response is. Because if they completely balk at it, then that that is potentially problematic.
I I think it a couple of things. I think um under council's guidance, the absolute proper protocol would be to amend the ordinance. I think looking at an inventory, if that was the criteria that was established, looking at understand uh an inventory so that we can understand what the scope potentially could be, would be prudent. And then I think because it is somewhat of a departure and a change from the um shared service agreement with Hardeston, I I think it does warrant a conversation with them.
Actually, it's not um really.
I was waiting for Sandy, cause go ahead, Sandy.
Because we have already done this with Hardingston. We have already issued four hundred and thirty hundred thousand dollars in exempt fees.
Those are government buildings.
Government buildings.
Government buildings.
Yeah.
Not nonprofits or churches or?
Well, all kinds of exempts, but it's not specific to registry. It's not specific to a church. It's not specific to government, you know what I mean? Because we're exempt, you know what I mean? So it's it's adding adding on to that. You know, because they are not exempt. So, but I think if you want us to dig a little deeper, I think that would be reasonable. Yeah, I don't know if it's gonna help Wayne in terms of timing because we have to do the research through the order, you know, like this is gonna take some time. But um if that, if you wanna give me that direction, then we'll, we'll start working on it tomorrow.
Other discussion, however?
I think it's important that we do something because you have a historic site that's on the national and on the state. And we need to kind of maintain these buildings. I mean, they're historic buildings. And I know we fought like crazy to maintain Horton House up at the college. And it turned out that that was a very good thing that we did because they're now using that building as training in different fields of uh electrical and carpentry. If this is going to become a children's museum, I think that would be a very, very good thing for our community. We don't really have things like that in our community. People are always complaining, there's no place for kids to go. There's nothing for kids to do. Well, how about a museum that where they can learn things? I think that's a good idea, actually. So I think we should pursue something where we can do something to make it easier on this type of a situation. Where we're concerned with an historic building on both levels, on state and and national. Question is, how many buildings in the town is that are actually on the state and the national? I don't think there are that many that would even qualify because I don't think there are that many. I believe Marion House is one of them.
Well, I think that's what we were saying is we need to understand the scope.
There are that many, I think, um, there's maybe a handful.
I I just get concerned when we start picking, we're still picking and choosing what we want to recreate our our uh ordinance for. That I get a little concerned that we're just gonna instead of precedent that other nonprofits are gonna come in, tell us, well, this is the reason why we think we are should benefit from this as well. And I just get concerned that we're just gonna open floodgates here.
I mean, an alternative proposal that I wouldn't necessarily advocate for because it would be different. But just just to throw it out there as as another way of thinking is, you know, to establish, you know, like a historic property preservation grant program within the town. Instead of offsetting the permit clause, we then just subsidize it with municipal funding. But I don't necessarily think that's the right of the bill, but it's just another way of potentially look at it. If if you didn't wanna recreate the ordinance or carve out those exception, it's not an exception per se, it's a historic property preservation.
And in kind, it would be granting kind.
Right.
As opposed, as opposed to the traditional view of a grant where there's an exchange of.
Well, so that's, that's where I think it, there actually has to be an exchange because the 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 money still has to be paid then. Who's paying? It's not as if we're cutting the fee and then just eating it in the back end because that money doesn't go to Hardeston then. Money still has to go to Hardeston and municipality is just subsidizing at full cost, just why necessarily entertain? Just proposing it as an alternative strategy.
Yeah, I'm conflicted as well, right? I I work in the space of nonprofits um and uh I'm also a data-driven numbers person. Um, and and we're constantly talking about the impact to the municipality and to our taxpayers, quite frankly, because of the third of our properties being non ratables. Um, understanding that, you know, a poor, good portion of that is government, um, but still and a significant amount are churches, nonprofit organizations, et cetera. Councilwoman Teets, I didn't, if I'm not sure if you had any additional comments?
No, I was actually thinking along the the lines as Councilman Dixon, you know, just kind of opening up. You know, others to come, you know, in the future. And even if we try to write an ordinance or rewrite the ordinance or change the ordinance, you know, to make this exception. But I also agree with Tom, what's the timeline? Because even, you know, a grant or the historic, you know, what's the timeline?
So I think I wanna know more about what this po- potential scope is because to JP's point and others, um we have, you know, I I started with the historic commission, right? We have significant um we have a lot of pride and we have a lot of uh work that's put into maintaining the historic integrity of the town of Newton. Um, contributing, non-contributing factors, there's a lot of discussion in that in that realm as well. We do have a historic commission. I was just meeting with a um a member of the Franklin Land Use Board and the town of Franklin is looking at in uh implementing, instituting, starting, creating um a historic district and and wanted to model theirs off of Newton's. Um, and so we had been talking about all of our processes and things like that and and, you know, there is there are a lot of other municipalities that that wish they had what Newton has, right? To that extent. So I think for me, I wanna understand what the scope of doing something like this would be. Um, in terms of outlining something that looks at the properties that are both on the local and the state and national historic registry, um, look at what our tolerance is around mitigating some of the fees, partial. What our tolerance is around mitigating some of the fees, partial, a percentage, some sort of grant, something like that, um.
Well, what's the consensus of the majority? Status quo or research? I would need sense of direction from you, because I'm hearing a different thing, so I kind of don't know. Do I have three for status quo, then I'm not gonna do the research, if there's three to do the research, then I go do the research.
I would say to the researchers, at least give us a full view of what's going on before any decisions made.
Hi.
Michelle?
I guess it would be good to have the research done.
But, as well, when it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Don't say that, man. That sucks.
There's a, there's a parallel element that you may accomplish and teasing is that as well, um, you know, I think in the past years, through the screen, we've had an issue where a number of. Properties within the historic district have some work, um, either. Had a schedule without soliciting proper permits, without approaching the historic preservation. Uh, uh, permission, and you know, if there is this potential. Avenue of alternative funding or permits, it might incentivize. Property owners to approach the town first before work is done, and then capture. The problematic areas that we've encountered over the past couple of years of trying to get people to adjust work after the fact.
Well, and to that point as well, there may be some properties or property owners that. Think that it's too cumbersome to invest the work, right, and maybe this would be, provide some sort of incentive for them to do it. Uh, let's see what the research tells us, um, agreed to. See what it says and then come back for further discussion? Okay? Alright.
Clearly, I have to get back to my board. What can I tell them?
I think it's fair to say, Mr. McCabe, that the council didn't say no. Um, meaning that. It, we're not in a position right now to be able to waive the fees, but we're looking at a possible, um. Amendment of the existing ordinance to make some accommodations given certain criterias. Okay. Any other discussion on this matter? Okay, so we'll move on to final council and manager comments, the only thing I'll say is that our HR director has left. Um, the acknowledgement, I think Councilwoman Teats has already signed it of uh, receiving the um, revised um. Employee handbook, so if everybody could just sign that for Jennifer before you leave today, uh, we'd appreciate that, thank you for providing those copies. Any other council manager comments, Mr. Russo? Mr. Kus? Mrs. Diglio? Mr. Dixon, Mrs. Teats?
Yeah, I'll just before the budget, just give the DPW and the Water and Sewer guys uh, some credit over the past couple of weeks, I know there's been some. Water main breaks and some snowstorms and uh, we have more snowstorms coming in our future, so.
Like two or three this week, which.
I know. Um, so I just wanna say thanks, because your work doesn't go unnoticed, very much appreciate it, and uh, thanks for keeping us all safe.
Thank you for acknowledging that, and um. The Recycling Center, that is, it is awesome, I'll just put that right there for now. Um, alright, so we are going to uh, conclude, conclude our meeting and then uh, continue with. Just the brief remainder of our budget hearings, so for this meeting, can I please have a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn at.
Eight thirty-six.
Eight thirty-six, okay.
For the second?
Second.
Alright, I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio, a second by Deputy Mayor Dixon, all at eight thirty-six, uh, all in favor? Alright, thank you very much, you are all welcome to stay for the budget hearings if you like. I know. Okay, so we're going to go back to our um, town council agenda for the budget hearings. Yeah, we're up. PW Water and Sewer uh, team come up, please?
Okay.
DPW Water and Sewer.
Adam, you're up first.
So just for the um, council, uh, we're not gonna go into a lot of detail about the um. Various projects, because we're gonna have our new engineers come to a future meeting, um, am I correct in saying that, Mr. Russo?
Yeah, we'll do the very brief description on the items that you see before you, but as far as the global. Conversation, we'll have Alani come in March tenth and she'll give you an update on her audit. Of all the project status, engineers and such, so. This will be just strictly what we're spending this year rather than, you know, global.
All the projects, status and.
That'll be March tenth with Alani.
Almost Adam wants to talk, I think.
Adam does not wanna talk about. So on page thirty-one, Adam.
So the way we've been doing this is if you want to talk to the council about any um, changes or uh, anything. That you wanna address on here, otherwise the council, if they have questions, so ask.
No, it's pretty straightforward, pretty much basically what we've been trying to maintain the last two years.
Any questions? On thirty-one? No questions?
Yeah, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three are the ones for. Now. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks for coming, Adam, we appreciate. Good job, Adam. It would take Cadillac hours to.
What's that? How's your step?
So we, we are, we are a little shortstop at the moment, um, we have enough, I mean, uh, posting out now, we're trying to hire somebody, we're just. Waiting for the applications to come in, then we'll go with that, and then. One more person after that would pretty much bring us up to where we're at right now.
So you're short two people?
Hmm, yep.
So we need to hire two people.
Well, we're, like I said, we're in the process of the one right now, and the goal would be to get another one later, so, yes.
Are we still brining?
We haven't been, no.
Right, okay.
Everyone complains about it, we get more complaints when we brine from residents than probably anything we do. Which is weird, but they don't.
Because someone asked me this weekend, we have a storm coming and I, I haven't seen the town brine.
Plus. We've, we've been using straight salt mostly this year, because we're trying to minimize some of the stuff, the, the storm drains for stormwater regulations, stuff like that, so. More salt has been used, I guess, in a way, so it hasn't. Even trying to just go with that, we're starting to use grit now because of all the little storms, we're getting lower on salt, so we're trying to make it last a little longer, but. Yep.
Isn't brine basically salt?
Yeah, salt water.
Okay, that's what I thought, salt water.
A lot of people feel that it kicks up into their undercarriage of their cars more and. I don't think it will, yeah, that's what people don't like it, so.
I would think less because it. You know, put it down, it dries and.
No?
You'd be surprised, too.
What is uh, more expensive?
Well. I feel like it maybe slows down accumulations of the road a little bit in the beginning, and at the end makes it a little bit blacken up a little bit quicker.
The brine?
The brine, but besides that, I mean, during a storm, when it's snowing and you're trying to make it so people can get through, it doesn't. In my opinion, there's too much.
Okay, right, we'll go to page forty-three. Forty-seven? Water and Sewer? If you're wondering, it's not that Mr. Jekyll is being antisocial, although he can tend to be. He has put in his papers for retirement, so he's, he's on the back nine, as we say in golf, and he's throwing Adam to the wolves, meaning the council tonight, correct?
Wow, we shouldn't be as easy then.
That's, that's why this is the dynamic, it's also why I have Jason here, yeah, he's breaking him in.
And what's our, our anticipated date of departure?
Um, July first.
We'll see you before then, but congratulations.
Yeah. So that's the second person we have to hire? Replace him?
No, you can't replace, you can't replace, can't replace Kenny. Getting late, Kenny, thanks, no.
So before we were talking about DBW, we're also, our goal is to get two more for Water and Sewer this year as well, one for each side.
Oh, okay. Oh, really? Cause last week when you were uh, DPW, you said no. Just kidding.
That's funny, Michelle. Alright, any questions uh, with regards to page forty-four? Forty-five?
And now we're second.
Forty-six, I'm moving to that, sorry, sending.
Uh, I guess it kinda goes back to staffing, um, have Smalley's uh, duties been absorbed by everyone else, are we getting a nude caretaker, or what?
Well, right now, we have another employee that we have up there at the lake with Mike working. So they kind of split the duties and split the weekends and. So as of right now, we got two people up there, so I guess we're kind of getting away with it there, not as cheap as it was when. Or the knowledge that Jack had, but it's working, so.
Page forty-seven? Tom, I noticed in your um, budget comments at the beginning of the evening, uh, you talked about an annual uh, assessment of water and sewer rates.
Yeah, so. Mr. Ferry came on board, uh, I'm not gonna put words in his mouth, but I, I'll put words in his mouth that he was concerned about our current rate structure. Say it that way. I'm not gonna say we've changed that perspective, but having the flexibility given to us by virtue of the. Principal forgiveness and the I-Bank program definitely gives us at least opportunity for some breathing room to reassess that, so. Tom can jump in, but you know, definitely, you know, bringing suburban onboard and finding the ability to get those grant funds is critical. In terms of long-term stability and having different conversations about the rates. Fair.
Yeah, so, right now, in the Water and Sewer, we have about seventeen million dollars worth of. Bonds and notes authorized but not issued, meaning that. They're either gonna be bonded or they're gonna be debt, however, most of it is I-Bank related. And as I just mentioned before, we were just talking about it, we just did that resolution tonight for two point one million for that note. Which was for the chemical room, pumps, in the SCADA, for the um, the, the brains of the whole operation. Um, and out of two point one million, two million is gonna be principal forgiveness. That comes right off of the seventeen million dollars, and then we got some other projects coming along too. That are in the process, the engineers have it, but again, it's all, it's so, yes, I changed my tune, because if we had to go out for notes.
Right.
Or bonds, and debt service started going up, then I had to take a look. Excuse me, I had to take a look at the way the revenues are coming in versus the amount of debt service we're taking on, and. In the state of New Jersey, there's a calculation and it, it's called self-liquidating, um, whether or not. The revenues coming in are paying for your maintenance and operation and your debt service.
For the utility.
So when we start, I always said, whenever we get to a certain point, I, I shoot up the flare going, you know, uh. Maybe next year, we ought to look at the rate structure, um, and, and you know, so what I do is I. You know, bring it out ten years, right now, we don't have to, because what I say about, uh, we only, we're under two hundred thousand dollars. And a healthy fund balance. Um, and again, the fund balances help out with um, if we do have to go out for notes or bonds, because um. The um, you know, the people giving us or spying our bonds, look at our fund balance and, and give us better interest rates.
Yep.
And give us a better rating.
Thank you, I just wanted to put that on the record, because it was in Tom's earlier presentation, if you, if you read it, and. Um, I know at a time, I mean, we just even talked about the utilities of the municipality, um, and how. We're seeing such a huge increase and so is everyone else, um, so. I know we've had lots of deliberations about I-Bank, the pros and cons of I-Bank and on the whole rest of it, so we'll look forward to the March meeting, but I wanted to just put that on the record, because. We don't have to adjust rates, um, and that's a good thing.
Uh, Adam, page fifty-eight, CIF, you wanna walk through the signboard trailer? Deb, recycling, and then the electrical programs, uh, memory part?
Heard the, the electric signboard trailers, we're actually looking to get two new electric signboard trailers, like you see along the road, you can write up and leave messages for. Currently, we have two. Water and Sewer owns one, the police own one, the Water and Sewer one is completely shot, doesn't work anymore, police one. Isn't really holding a charge and is having issues more and more, and they both get sort of DPW, we put them out for them, so they're pretty much like ours anyway, so I figured we should just. Get new ones that we can put out, we can program from our computers for the messages, make it a little easier.
They call them yours and.
Well, okay, yeah. Whatever they, anybody else needs, when they just call us to put them out anyway, so I figure we get them and keep them at our shop anyway and go from there, and plus. Now that we also are notifying people when roads are being hit, so we can put them up for that and. Cause the old ones are, are very difficult to use, the keyboards don't wanna put the letters in, you type in, it's, it's real. It's not fun, so.
Deb, can you come up, talk about recycling? Please?
Can't she talk about?
I know, so excited.
Adam's favorite topic.
Yeah. Adam, just push the microphone. You know, people on Zoom.
Um, tomorrow morning, ironically, at six AM, we are taking delivery of our two cardboard containers. So we did give the public ample notification, three weeks notification with flyers handed out by our attendant. Um, it's been met with reluctance, because people feel it's gonna be a hazard, um, so. They will be on display up at the center for a week to get people used to seeing them, the slats are probably about four inches wide, so they don't have to completely crush it. Um, but right now, um, we have to have a machine operator go up to crush the cardboard. So this will enable um, more time for the attendant to spend with the public, um, and DPW doesn't have to stop what they're doing to go up and crush the cardboard, um.
People have a lot of courage.
Yeah.
Things we get shoulderful when we go to the.
Yeah, so um, the recycling center upgrades, um, what we want to do is, I mean, Mrs. Mary, you know, um, it gets traffic jams, we have accidents in there. Um, so what we're, yeah, Michelle knows too, um, so what I'd like to do, and I did have Mr. Russo on site as well as Corey Stoner. We would like it so that you would drive past the current entrance up to the park and ride. Come in from the high side and it's a straight shot in, and then basically you would come out the entrance, that would be the new exit, we'd narrow it down. It will alleviate the congestion from Georgia salvage, as well as all the traffic we now have for the dog park, the roller hockey rink. Um, and it'll keep the people off the roadway, they'll be in the center waiting, so it'll be more streamlined, plus it helps with the containers on the bottom level. Cause that will be a truck-only entrance, um, so it'll be more streamlined.
So how do you envision educating people to?
Flyers, signboard, um, our new Facebook.
One that works.
Well, and the signboard, we can program from our desk, you don't need to plug in the keyboard, go out on site, it's real time, so we can sit anywhere. Um, log into it and change it.
So do you envision wayfinding signs up at recycling center to get, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that will prevent the guy from doing donuts up there with his kids hanging out in the car.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and people don't know that that whole, all up there is now all on video, everything up at the park and ride. The dog park, the roller hockey, the park in the parking lot, all the way down Starway Boulevard, our whole center is now on camera. Um, so you know, we've had people that are utilizing our garbage cans for household trash, now we get license plates and thanks to the chief and his officers, they knock on a door and let people know that. They're missing some valuable items and we've kept them for them and they can come pick them up, so, yeah.
I think the flattening of the cardboard, I mean, that is going to make people clean out the cardboard, so it doesn't have all the styrofoam and other packing materials and things that people tend to leave in there.
Plus, we're hoping with our end market, which is global recycling in Andover, the cleaner the cardboard, the more money we get. So hoping now that it's enclosed, it, it's not open to the elements, it'll be dry and it'll suit their needs, so there'll be more revenue coming back to the town.
So you're gonna have the existing um. Containers in there, so there's a little bit of a grace period, or we, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Um, and just because we're on, because we're on record too, um. Well, I think we started to say how many, all the things that you guys are taking now, but if you wanna just run through the list, electronic.
So electronics, and that's everything from keyboards to mice to computers to VCRs, televisions, um, all electronics. Um, we now signed a pilot program with SCUMA, so. So we weigh our car, our styrofoam weekly. And we are bringing it to them to see if there's the potential with us partnering with SCUMA to make us a satellite. For drop-offs. So um every time I reach out to SCUMA and I say, hey. What about this? And they say, well, just send the people our way. Well, that's great, but there's a lot of traffic lights and a lot of traffic between. The people would rather throw it in the garbage can than to drive to SCUMA. So SCUMA is now seeing by the volume we're bringing them weekly. We're bringing over a hundred and fifty pounds of styrofoam to them. So they're starting to notice. So we have a dedicated shipping container, which I did. Purchase another one. Um so once the weather breaks, we'll transition um and we'll have everything all lined up.
So electronics.
Styrofoam light bulbs, any time, any type of light bulbs from your small appliance all the way up to your twelve-foot um. LEDs and CFLs. Um. We take alkaline batteries to lead-based batteries. We do get money back for all of those. And I am awaiting a quote for lithium batteries. So um we will be the first one in the county aside from the county itself to accept lithium. The great thing about us accepting it is we don't have a structure such as a building. That we have to worry about burning down. It will be inside a shipping container. Everything will be enclosed. So um once we get that proposal and if everything looks okay, we discuss it with Mister Russo when we agree to move forward. There will be public education. Um and that is part of the thing is. We're so densely populated and as the police are dealing with the motorized bikes with the lithium batteries, they're looking to educate, we're looking to educate. So it's gonna be like twofold on that. So um so probably in like a month, we'll have notice of that. Um currently sitting in our garage is a purple-colored um. What looks like a clothing bin, but it will collect plastic, so that will be going up to the center. Um it has some squeaky little eyeballs and some decorative hair on it. Um it'll be on our Facebook page, just some fun for the center for the kids. Um you know, we're working on something with the schools, you know, bring your hot dog roll bags, your bread bags, your Ziploc bags, um. Your Amazon shipping bags, all the examples um will be posted. Um so the information flyers will be on the front of it. Um we're gonna place that next week um after the weather kind of clears a little bit. Um so we have that. We take all cell phones, all tablets. Um clothing, textiles, everything that comes in from stuffed animals to belts, shoes, to clothing, to linens. All of that goes to a warehouse where it's sorted for nonprofits. Salvation Army's shelters, uh youth groups, um like your weekend bag program type programs. They all come in, it's all sorted, so people can go in and take. So the stuff that we collect is not shredded and disposed of. It's going somewhere useful. So we have that on site. Um we take your, you know, your normal uh co-mingle, the plastic bottles, metal. Um scrap um cardboard, mixed paper, your junk mail, people still get junk mail. There's a container there for it. We take rigid plastic, which is your Home Depot buckets, um flower pots. Um your Adirondack plastic furniture that breaks every year, um Little Tykes furniture. Um and then our final is the scrap metal. So we partnered with Georgia Salvage. Anything that has metal, utensils, pots and pans, um fence posts, chicken wire. Anything that's metal goes in that bin and it gets weighed and we get a rebate check back from Georgia Salvage.
And books.
And now books. Yeah, so I tried to get the tonnage that we've done. Um but I didn't get it in time, so I partnered with a company in Maryland. Um he comes up. When we're almost full, we have three bins, the volume has been outrageous. Um and we're gonna start seeing some revenue from that as well. Every book that goes in, the barcode is scanned, it goes into a database. Anybody who's looking for a book is notified. Everything that's on a shelf, I think it's longer than like four months with this facility. It gets given to a major game board company and made into game boards. It's wet down, put into forms when you buy TVs and you have that shaped cardboard, all that, that's what that's for. And then um we also have the American flag mailboxes. Um. We are going to be weather permitting in the next week or two. We're gonna be um conducting a ceremony to get. To retire formally, all of the flags that we have, there are trailer loads. Um so we're working with the Newton VFW on that. Um and then we have in memory park on the snack stand, there's gonna be a Newton mural put on that white starch. Building um in the next coming weeks. The same woman that did that is donating her services to the VFW. Um ceremonial ring that we did. So so that. That information will be coming out soon. And then lastly, um is cords. So um everybody who brings an appliance in that is recyclable, we cut the cord, the cord goes into a barrel. So Christmas lights, lights removed, all of that wiring we take, extension cords, um old computer cords. All of that, the material inside has copper, we get money for it. So it's something that we haven't really pushed the advertisement on yet. Um we've just been kind of putting it in the scrap metal bin for Georgias, but they said, hey, due to our volume now, they want us to separate it. So it's a second avenue of revenue. So by the time our bulk collection comes around, hopefully, we won't. Have as many people with stuff because we have something for everybody at the center.
Are we gonna have room for the armory uh land to be done? Or are we just gonna expand that into the Newton SCUMA mecca?
Thank you.
So with the new like traffic. So like I picture. You know, somebody that might have like a black pickup truck. They get in line. So like first they stop at, you know. Cardboard and then like they keep moving like the vehicle up, you know, or.
Well, that's the potential. So um visited our Randolph's facility and that's kind of how they do it. Um so they have like a little bit of a break in between, so you kind of take care of those three things. You pull up, you take care of those couple of things and you pull up. So um. Corey Stoner and I like had, like on paper, not that you wanna see our artwork, but we had kind of this mapped out. Um you know, where we feel there's enough room in there without going too big on the footprint. That this will all work. So.
And then there'll be staff there.
Yes, we currently have one staff member um who is fantastic. Um he, you know, your husband probably saw him. He dressed as an elf the entire Christmas season. Um handed out Christmas cards and he plays music that people love. Um so you know, there's a lot of people that wanted to go full-time. Um so my response to them right now is, well, we have to have days to empty the containers. You know, people can't work seven days a week. So maybe in the future, we can add a day or two, but we still have to have. The staff to empty all of the, you know, the containers. Um the vendors come and they pick up the books, the. Georgia's picks up their stuff, the electronics is picked up, the light bulbs are picked up, so the other stuff, you know, we handle transport for. So.
And do you have like historic record, like? And I'm not asking to go and calculate it, but like how many vehicles you see on a given.
So there's something that Mister Russo's office, I believe, is working on, and I was posed that question today by um Jessica Caldwell's office. And I told her, without putting a speed bump counter in there, I really don't know. Um it is busy. I mean, when you look at the camera some days. The line is out, you know, people just want to get in there and we have people every day calling like, did you really add this? We're like, oh my gosh. You know, so I think with making it so convenient for people now, the flow is picking up. So and this is the reason why we kind of wanna realign it because. South Park Drive is a happening road now with the dog park and roller hockey pedestrians from the apartment buildings, you know, so we wanna make it. Safe for everybody.
The state tonnage grant, it's just for co-mingle?
So the state tonnage grant is for everything.
So even like your appliance cords and. Books?
Yes. So all the revenue that comes in gets put back into that account. And then um you know, like the bin that I got, the purple Barney bin, um I bought that with recycling funds. So every time we go to do something, I utilize those recycling funds unless I can get a donation, which I have to say, Georgia's salvage. Has been a great friend to us and um they actually donated a shipping container. I, you know, did the purchase order to purchase it. And then they turned around at the end of the year and just said Merry Christmas for everything that you're doing. So um you know, we got that donated.
So the metal that we have and we're taking to George's, they're giving us a review that that is counted in tonnage as well?
Yes. So um at the end of every year, every business um in town has to submit to the New Jersey DEP. So those numbers are like certified, they're either sent directly to me or they're sent to the county. Then they come back to us and then we compile it, all the information, and then we get money for certain volumes of things. So the big moneymaker is food waste. So the USDA grant was written with the intention of recycling food waste. Well, Newton School District partnered the fantastic program with Rutgers University. They're composting their own stock. So when I met with um Superintendent Picarello when he first started. Um that was the goal, you know, and whoever got the most food recycling was gonna get like a water bottle refill station in their school. Well, when we went to go implement it, they had already received all this stuff from Rutgers, so it kind of put a damper on it. Um and then when I reached out to other food facilities in town. There there was hiccups with it all. So I reached out to the USDA and said, I'm stuck. You know, I I wanna use your money, but I can't. What do I do? So we're in the process of getting a one-year extension and. Trying to find a way to utilize that grant money for the center that falls in line with their definition. So it's, there is still a possibility, but I I just don't know which direction we're going at.
Any other questions for DPW water sewer recycling?
Still have a few more, anything for Dad?
Mister Russo's recyclables?
Coming soon. Uh Adam, electrical upgrades to memory park seems so. I know, it's boring, but do your best.
Alright, so for the electrical repairs on memory park, we're looking to incorporate more outlets and things there for, like we have new day events like that. We're looking to put like a box like we have where on the football fields on that side with more outlets. As well as upgrades to the lighting by the basketball courts and the poles, cause the poles are old and they're starting to rot, they're starting to become a hazard. So before. Anything happens, I wanna get them all fixed and replaced and. It's pretty much where.
So that's CIF, and then what about the snow remover?
So the snow remover, that is a Ventrack tractor. With snow blower attachment, plow attachment, broom attachment with a winter cab for the guys doing sidewalks. We've had the two oh six sidewalk just put in. They added a new one up in Duma with all the sidewalks you already have. They just need something better, safer for them to be out doing it. And all the time, right now, we're using. Couple four-wheelers, which are good, but for when you're getting too far in town and there's no the elements. They they need something that is good and with new state highway sidewalk. The state buries every sidewalk they have, so it's it's really long. And the four-wheelers can't really push it when it gets slushy and frozen, so that's why we're looking for a new machine for the sidewalk crew to make their lives a little bit easier.
And we're also doing road improvements, um Capital, Mountview, Palmer, Trinity, Moran, Garner, Pine, Mason, Lower Union, so. Pretty aggressive program for this year and then we have continuation. Corey's ongoing with the memory park connector for the rail trail. That's got some energy to it now and some stuff that he's working on as we speak, so get some updates from him, but um that's all I have for Adam.
Any other questions from or discussion from council?
Then um Kenny, you sure you don't wanna come up and just do the water sewer briefly or you want Joey, uh what do you wanna throw that to? I I know, but this is your last budget.
Jason, where do you wanna be?
Alright, Jason. Uh Capital Water Sewer refurbished chlorine contact tanks, RBCs, sludge returns and lead service lines. Anything on those?
That would be your cue to describe them.
Go ahead and describe them.
Yeah, they replace RBCs as clear as day.
Alright, so the chlorine tanks are sewer, correct? Alright, one was constructed in nineteen sixty-five, the other was nineteen ninety in need of repair. And upgrades to the concrete structures along with upgrading the valves and piping. Tanks main purpose is to allow the filtered effluent to have more contact time with the chlorine disinfectant before it is discharged into Moore's Brook. Sound good so far? Alright. Uh secondary sludge returns. Sl- sludge returns are part of the second stage pump station and final clarifiers. They consist of various valve pumps and motors along with a network of piping that controls the flow of sludge. The majority of the plumbing and valves date back to nineteen ninety and. Are in need of refurbishment, replacement. And the RBCs, one B, two B, we have a total of eight. Two were refurbished in twenty fourteen and one was done in twenty twenty-four. As of right now, we have two more that are not operational. One D, which is being replaced starting in March twenty twenty-five and two B also. One B is having issues with its drive. The RBCs are over thirty years old and are well beyond their useful life and in need of replacement. Love Kenny, thank you, Ken. Anything you guys wanna add to that or is it pretty straightforward?
Pretty much.
Alright, good job, Jason, very good.
He's been studying.
That is all we have for.
Again, I know I said it earlier, but I just wanna thank uh all the staff, department heads and then the team for all the work that they've done on their budgets and. Being prepared for tonight. Thank you guys for the work you're around, of course.
Thank you guys. Alright, good job. Alright. Chief Miller, you're up.
Fire, let's go. Thirty. Page thirty. Chief Miller, go.
Uh page thirty, any questions for the people? One thing I'll throw, uh while he goes, looks over, um I, Tom Ferry added fire museum, speaking of National Registry. So the town of Newton is seeking to apply to the state and national registers for historic places to formally list the Newton Fire Museum. Located at one fifty Spring Street to secure future grant funding. To be used towards rehab and public outreach educational projects. The Newton Fire Museum is located in the town's local historic district, which is an integral part of the town's downtown and. Historic district, as well as an economic center featuring a combination of uses such as commercial and restaurant establishments, offices and residences on upper floors. The main objective of applying to the state and national registers to take advantage of financial benefits for future rehab grants as well as open the museum to the public for cultural and heritage tours. Supporting visitors and historic tourism in the downtown and historic districts. That's from Jessica Caldwell. That's why you see that ten thousand there.
So the ten thousand's gonna cover the application and the making the case for it. Questions from council on page thirty?
Right, and the only other items for Chief. Really my number with. For again, with Chris Wolverton in the capital. Firehouse one, phase three, exterior nine fifty, that's to do the wraparound, you know, on the new exterior of the firehouse one and the. Parking lots and the stairs and all the fun stuff on the outside. Contractor did a nice job on the inside. Still have some punchless items, but um that would be to close out that project is a bid this year for phase three. Any comments on the work of phase one and two? And I thought the contractor did a nice job overall.
I'm actually sad to admit that I haven't seen it. I wanna uh make it, make it, take a trip over there and see it.
We're in there doing the final punch list today, uh Corey, Chris and I. They got a little more, couple little things to do and. Yeah, we ready to move it.
The seniors can have their prime time senior space back. They were here in full force tonight, you know.
We are all ready for that.
They have the same space that they had, you know, that little corner as you walk in, the same. They'll be happy to know that.
So when's it gonna be done?
The uh, when you, when you walk into the kitchen, there's two lock cabinets that they are able to.
No, I'm saying, when is the, it gonna be done? Punch list was today?
Uh the punch list was today, the contractor's gonna get called tomorrow with the punch list, so soon.
Soon, I like that, okay. I was told we couldn't get back there until the mortgage comes.
Well, the seniors aren't gonna sit on the floor.
I know that, but the tables. Yeah, we don't mind them at all.
Uh anything you want us to know, chief?
Um, not really, um, just uh, everything's cooking with the the fundraise, fundraising that we're doing, we got uh, good fifty fifty coming or raffle licensing, we're getting all squared away, do some funds to offset some stuff and uh, status quo for us and uh, is it?
What's the fundraiser?
Uh, we're doing a raffle licensing, uh, we're gonna start doing more fifty fifties and long-term like big prize things. It's something new we're doing, uh, we just got that all squared away. And uh, we got some a little more paperwork to do and then we're gonna start a, I think they're looking for like um, a May drawing on one of the new fundraisers we're doing, so.
Are you still doing like the golf outing and?
Golf outing's coming up in July, it's the last Monday in July. Um, couple of point tosses throughout the year, St. Patty's parties. These takes are coming once we move station one back to station one. But yes, as long as we get room in the museum, so. Me too, I love them, but uh, yeah, progress, lots of progress.
Let's let down for the big truck.
Um, I have to talk to time manager about that.
I know, we gotta plan a date.
Very well, yeah, hopefully sometime warm.
What'd you say?
This is, he say sometime warm.
Sometime warm.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe like June, July.
Anything for the fire department? Our mutual aid responders up here, anything for the fire department?
Escape this.
Michelle, anything from here in?
Why?
No, I, I see the fire department regular, so uh. One would be good. Alright, we got easy tonight.
Membership's good.
Yeah, alright, got the, um, new outfit come out for uh, the next meeting, so. We got a couple, we got a junior moving up, so. You're good.
I saw you a bunch of guys go through school and everything.
Oh yeah, we have uh, we have two guys going through fire two this year coming up in uh, June, we're starting a uh, one member's going through a whole month. Uh, Morse program for uh, fire one starts June second and July eleventh. Looks they had that back when I took it, but.
Yeah.
One and done, so, yeah.
Cool, very good.
Nice representation of the fire department at tonight's ceremony too, so it's kind of nice to see the partnering and.
So they can't only bring two pieces and they had to park far away. They wanted to bring the whole fleet, but.
That's nice. Anything else for us?
Thank you. There was no truck discussion this year, guys.
No. I moved that, um. Mayor, that concludes our presentation.
Alright, so at this time, we will open the budget hearings to the public. Mr. Flaherty?
Flaherty.
Chief Firey, one fifty fourth Sparta Avenue in Newton. I wanna first uh, thank Tom and the staff for all their hard work and thing. Together a very understandable budget every year. It gets a little easier for me to understand what's going on. It also like.
Can you tell us? No, just kidding.
For their uh, hard work in this effort too. And I wanna thank the mayor for the cookies. Appreciate.
We have some additional uh, sources came up, so you have to get those really.
Uh, as far as uh, items on the water and sewer, uh, I understand that that is the rate through something that's going to be looked at. Uh, I've mentioned this before that I think the capital charge being equal for all users is really a bit unfair that uh, heavy users should pay more than uh, those who don't use as much. Uh, I don't think the current structure promotes conservation. And along that same line with the minimum charge uh, for four thousand or less gallons. Uh, I'll give you an example where I think there's an inequity there. Uh, last year in the second quarter, uh, we used three thousand five hundred and fifty gallons of water. We were charging for four thousands, the minimum. So that was a four hundred and fifty uh, gallon difference. In the next quarter, we used four thousand three hundred and thirty gallons. And we were charged for the entire amount there. But I already paid the four hundred and fifty gallons of that under the prior quarter's minimum. So I'm getting charged twice for conserving water. And again, I think that that structure needs to be looked at. I'm not sure that there's really a benefit to having a minimum charge. Everyone should pay for what they use. And I have one minute, I'm finished.
Understood. Well, we do, well, we do have a new CFO who uh, likes to look at all the numbers in lots of different ways. So I imagine that he's listening and will take all that consideration as well. Um, and I think, I'm not sure if you were in the room, but um, given the uh, principle of forgiveness opportunities that we've been able to assume on our I-bank, um, it looks like this year we will not be making any adjustments to the rates.
Well, I would still like to look at that because as I said, year in, year out, quarter to quarter, I think you should pay for what you use. And getting charged, what I feel is getting charged twice for conserving water really, really doesn't make sense to me.
Make a good argument.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I just wanna thank, I mean, you thanked everybody else when you started, but I wanna thank you for being here year in and year out and uh, I mean, I know that you even get your own copy of the budget with your name on it, so um, thank you for being here as part of the process. Yes, thank you. You didn't get a stamp on a hidden page? Gosh, you better take some extra cookies with you. Oh, you didn't? Oh, you had to find it. You did get a stamp somewhere in there. Oh, okay, okay. Uh, Mr. Russo, anybody online?
Uh, no hands, babe.
Okay, uh, any other comment?
So mayor.
Yes.
Tom, so right now we have the introduction for February twenty-fourth. With that, the adoption date will be March twenty-fourth. We are self-exam, so the state doesn't have to review our budget. So remember, that's every three years, so we're okay. And we're shooting for the advertisement date uh, in the newspaper, either March sixth or seventh, which is a Thursday, Friday.
Okay, that helps us uh, meet our timeline by the, of the end of March. For completion, adoption, introduction, adoption, et cetera, et cetera. Good. Alright, any other comments, questions, thoughts? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn and I?
We'll be okay to introduce?
Oh, are we okay to introduce as presented?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to introduce this present.
That's not on here, but okay. No, but do, but I mean, do we have any changes? I guess what I'm saying is, is there any, is there anything that based on those conversations or presentations tonight? Is there anything that we are instructing Tom and the team to go back and look and assess, cut, change, make any changes to? No.
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 Not that I'm interested.
Alright, so I wanna make sure, so thank you.
Thirty-six, thirty-six, thirty-six dollars it is.
And yeah, thank Tom and the staff. I mean, I know everybody's mentioned it, but you know, I personally know what it's like to go through it. Um, we do a couple of cycles a year and it's fun to share with.
They say Tom, with the mandates and stuff, like, don't you have like whiplash, Michelle?
Uh, yeah. If you could tell the frustration when I got here today, it's, yeah, so I appreciate everything that you guys do and uh, I know it's not easy.
Thank you. Alright, it's nine twenty-six, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-six.
To second?
I will second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio, second by Councilwoman Tease to adjourn at nine twenty-six, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you, everyone.